Welcome and good evening to the City of Shakopee, uh, City Council Workshop for August 29, 2017. First item of, uh, order, call, we could call the roll, please.
Mr. Mayor? Councilmember Lou.
Yeah.
Councilmember Lehman.
Here.
Mayor Mars.
Here.
Councilmember Whiting.
Here.
Councilmember Mokel.
Here.
Thank you. Let's all stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in common.
Thank you. Item number three, approval of agenda. Are there any changes, additions, deletions, Mr. Reynolds?
Nothing from staff, sir.
Councilor Mokel?
I'll make a motion to approve the agenda.
Second.
I have a second by Councilor Whiting. Um, discussion, discussion, discussion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed, motion passes. Moving ahead to, uh, item number four, consent agenda. There's one item on there. Um, any additions, subtractions, deletions? Mr. Reynolds?
Nothing from staff, sir.
Move the consent agenda.
I have a motion to move the consent by Councilor Lehman and a second by Councilor Whiting. Before we vote, we will read the consent agenda into the public record. Mr. Reynolds?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. These, or this is the consent agenda item for August 29th of 2017 for A1. This approved the application and grant a tobacco license to Hy-Vee Incorporated doing business as Hy-Vee Gas at 1421 Adams Street.
I have a motion. I have a second. The consent agenda has been read into the public record. There will be no discussion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed, motion passes. Thank you very much. Moving ahead to our workshop items now. We will start with 5A preliminary budget levy review and Darren will present. Or Mr. Reynolds, I apologize.
Well, that's fine, sir. My, my comments are going to be relatively brief, uh, both in my budget letter and then in the memo. I think, uh, uh, both Darren and I outlined, uh, what our status is overall. Um, I think that, uh, as you know, this is year three in a transfer transformative process with our budget. Um, I'm very excited about where we are both internally from a system-wide comprehensive budget process is concerned, but, but also for the value added that we're delivering to the taxpayer based upon what we have on the table here tonight. So, uh, uh, you know, the, the memo and, and the, uh, uh, the budget letter both outline that in some detail. Uh, that being said, I, I invite the public to read that online, but otherwise, uh, Mr. Nelson?
Thank you, Mr. Reynolds. Uh, Mayor, council members, thank you for having us here tonight. Uh, basically my presentation goes through kind of the budget, um, memo that was in your agenda for tonight. And we can kind of go through that as fast or as slow as you, you would like, so don't hesitate to jump in and ask, um, questions as we proceed through here. Uh, first item is the, the budget calendar. Just wanted to kind of touch base on a couple of things and make sure that we all are on the same page with what's happening at this point in time, what's happening tonight, and what's happening for the remainder of the year to get the 2018 budget, um, in place. Back in July, we had a preliminary review of our capital improvement plan. Uh, we got some great feedback from the council at that point in time. We'll be bringing that back to council for our final CIP, um, at our second council meeting in September when we approve the, the preliminary levy as well. Um, at that preliminary levy, we'll, we'll be looking at both the city levy and an EDA levy, which we'll talk about more tonight. Um, and then we'll also have some resolutions, um, for some debt service that we'll talk about as well too, that will be able to reduce, um, the debt service levies a, a little bit compared to what the, the statutory or the initial debt issuances were on those. Um, so then by that council meeting that's in September, I need to then, um, prepare information for the county so they get their preliminary, um, tax information out so they can get two from taxation notices out that usually hit, um, taxpayers, um, about the middle of November or so. And then in November as well, we'll have another work session to review the budget document, um, in detail. This, uh, setting the preliminary levy will then give direction to, uh, the rest of the departments to kind of finalize or start working on the details of their budget. To this point in time, we've really looked at just the, kind of the 30,000 foot, looking at kind of our big budget items that have a significant impact, um, to the levy at this point in time. Uh, we, we'll be winding that down as, as the year progresses. Then in December 5th, which is our first council meeting in December, we'll hold our public meeting to discuss the levy and the budget. Um, it's not necessarily a public hearing, but it's an opportunity for the public to discuss the budget at, at that point in time. Um, and then we'll bring back the, the final budget in December at the second council meeting on the 19th. And then I have to get all the, the paperwork into the, the county and the state by the end of the, the fiscal year, so. That's where we're sitting at on that. Um, jumping into the budget, uh, being a service organization, obviously wages and benefits are, are a big driver of our, of our budget. Um, the budget has been built with a 3% COLA in place. Two of our three unions, um, entered into contracts for 2017, 18, and 19. All of them had a 3% COLA increases for each year on that end of it, so, um, at this point, we're building in that 3% COLA. Um, health insurance side of it, we haven't gotten our preliminary estimate for what our renewal will be for next year. Um, we're running, we anticipated about a 15% increase. That's about a 5% increase over what we anticipated last year. Uh, the reason being is that our claims are running quite a bit higher than they were, um, compared to prior years. So, even at 15%, we're kind of on the fence of whether that's enough or, or not. We're keeping our fingers crossed that, um, the renewal comes in okay at this, at this point in time, so. Another item that affects the, the wages and benefits item is the class of comp study. Um, HR and admin undertook an, uh, a project this, this summer I believe it was, and started looking at all the, the comp classes of all the positions, positions within the city that will have a financial impact to the city. We're not necessarily sure at this point exactly what, um, that financial impact is. We have built in, we have built in a, a number of, we've built in about a hundred thousand dollars of just, um, kind of a cushion to, to see where that comes in at. Not all positions will see, you know, classification changes or rate changes or anything like that, but we may have some positions that here or there that need to be, uh, modified and that would help suffice that. But obviously by the time we come back with the final budget in December, we would know that, where that number is at and be able to adjust accordingly. And from that, there are no other budget changes, uh, wage changes, um, anticipated or benefit changes. There's no, um, para's staying the same. There's no increases in para legislated or anything like that for the upcoming year. Um, there are seven full-time positions being requested in the budget. Uh, we have one from fire, two from, actually three from police with two police officers, um, and then a co-compliance officer, uh, planner in the planning and development division or department, and then, uh, two full-time lifeguards within the recreation division as well too. Uh, these are all positions that are, the, the lifeguards specifically are needed for the, the expanded community center piece on that end of it and such. And I know directors aren't here tonight to talk about those positions, so if you wanted to, to pick their brain anymore on that or see any more justification or what they're thinking of behind their position, feel free to, um, inquire with that or have them jump in if you have questions on that. Um, I know the police officers were looking at an October 1st of 2018 to come on board. Um, and talking with Chief Tate, he kind of likes that timeframe, with that October timeframe, is that when, uh, the graduating classes come out in the spring, they go through their skills, I believe, in the summertime, and then they're, um, we get a good crop of, of candidates for that October start timeframe is the rationale behind the October 1st, uh, 2018 start date, if I, if I'm interpreting what he, he was mentioning before, so.
Mr. Mayor?
Yeah.
So this will have an effect on 2019?
Obviously 2019, then the police officers would come on board at full, if they have a full year of, of salary there.
What's the fully loaded cost per year?
Uh, it'd be about, obviously that's a third of it there at the 10-18, so it's probably about ninety thousand dollars or so for a full, for, per officer. Yeah.
And then don't we, uh, what are we doing for lifeguards right now?
Um, we can, we can, uh, we're actually going to have each member of, uh, of the department that's requesting come in and, and talk about their different positions if you want to wait.
Okay.
If that works.
Yep.
Well, this might be the time to do that at this point.
Unless you want to do it now?
Yeah. We can do that now if you want.
Well, we only got one meeting between now and adopting it. It's my understanding, right?
Right.
Putting out a general...
Where are you thinking? I'm, I'm sorry.
Oh, no.
Were you thinking tonight or a different time?
No, tonight.
Yeah.
Not like right now. I was going to let you go through your pro, your...
Okay. We can do that.
Okay.
We can do that.
I'll save all my questions for later then.
So, that's how our new positions look for, for this year, so we'll come back to that one and get that one back up. Uh, another item affecting our, our 2018 budget is our internal rents or, or internal charges. As you may recall, last year we brought forward, um, a plan to restore those rents that had been reduced back in 2014. We've done some long-range analysis on, um, just their equipment and park assets and really looked out beyond that 20-year timeframe, looking at 25, 30-year timeframe to make sure that, um, the rents we're charging actually are, are sufficient to, what they needed to, what we needed to collect. What we found is that, that 20% reduction really did affect the long-term, um, sustainability of that, of those funds. And so, uh, council agreed to bring back that in a kind of a two-part step. Uh, we, we restore half of it last year and half of it this year. Um, although there was one caveat, we did restore the park asset, um, stuff to a hundred percent last year, so it'll have a little bit less of effect this year. Uh, but it does still have a budget impact of about a hundred and fifty thousand dollars to bring those rents.
Now, 10% just on the, the rent depreciation and the park asset was fully refunded last year?
Right, right. So we'd actually brought back, I think we brought back 3% back in 2015 or six, probably 16, and then we brought back eight and a half percent last year, then eight and a half percent this year.
Eight and a half, right. Half now.
So we've backed up to a hundred percent after, at the end of this year, so, or 2018. And then the total internal charges are increasing by about $265,000, and that's due to both restoration of that eight and a half percent plus the replacement cost of new equipment. So when new equipment comes on, it comes on at that new value. So if a dump truck was purchased 15 years ago and was purchased at a hundred thousand, now it's a, it's a hundred and forty thousand dollar truck, it's that forty thousand dollar incremental cost that's being depreciated as well then.
I guess I was trying to look at that number, the 150, and then the replacement cost of equipment at a, another hundred more, but if it's brand new, we're going to get 20 years out of it. I thought it would be a lower differential rather than a higher, and that's what I, I struggled with.
Yeah, so there is, so there's that difference of if it's a hundred thousand dollar piece of equipment you're depreciating over 10 years, that you got ten thousand a year there, but now if it's a hundred and twenty thousand dollar piece of equipment, now it's twelve thousand dollars a year. Um, so it's that incremental difference between the old price and the new price of that equipment.
Okay, the new, the new versus the old price for replacement. And the depreciation standards are, years are still the same?
The years are all still the same. It's, and it's all straight-line depreciation and you make it...
But that only applies to the new values of the new vehicles, not the old.
Right.
Right, absolutely. Yep, absolutely.
Okay. Thank you.
Yep. Uh, also addition to our internal charges at the community center, and we talked about this last year, is that we were, you know, we're issuing debt that would have to be, that needs to be repaid over the next 20, 25 years. Um, but also, we didn't want to necessarily charge a hundred percent rent at that community center. We didn't want to double tax those current users of that facility. Um, so we, we talked about making that a 35% of what the, the value of that building is. And that 35% really would then accumulate funds to pay for things that could go out in the next 10 to 20 years of its, you know, if it's roof replacements or HVACs or, um, ice arena components or things like that that aren't building structure-wise, but components of the building that may need to be replaced in that, that 10 to 20-year timeframe.
Is that above and beyond building rent?
No, that's, that is the building.
Okay.
That is the building rent. Yeah.
So the way you just described it is different than I read the, on this, and I...
Okay.
I read it just like this, that we're depreciating at 35%, but you're calculating the rent and replacement fund of it at 35% of the, of what's going to go forward on the replacement items.
Correct. So if the, if the building's thirty million dollars, um, we're depreciating 35% of that over 50 years.
Right.
Um, and then once the, kind of the notion is that once the, the bond payments are done, we would then, if that's, I can't remember if it's 20 or 25 years, once those are done, we would then ramp up the rents at that point in time because we would have increased capacity at that point, obviously, with two million dollars less in, in debt service payments, so, uh, we could ramp, ramp up the rent.
Is this acceptable under accounting practices, standard accounting practices?
Yes, sir, it is.
I, I, I just, I've never seen it that it was as such a, it, it appeared like a large amount to me, that's why I'm asking.
Yeah, and this is, it's, it's kind of our leeway of how we want to, because we're accumulating funds for our replacement of that, so we don't have to issue a debt down the road for replacement costs.
I know as we talked last year, we're saying a brand-new building and then, um, 20, 30-year replacement, that the rent would be exorbitant.
Right. This is, this is not, this is not depreciating the building per se. This is taking what building rent would be for, like we do on any other city building, except instead of using a hundred percent over the years of the life of the building, 50 years or whatever the building is, yeah, some years somewhere past, but we're using a lesser number. We could say zero if we wanted to, but if it ever needs something in 10 years, you don't have the funds for it.
Okay.
Yep.
Thank you for that clarification.
And you should note that the value of that is based off of December 31st, 2016. So obviously the, the ice arena was fully complete at that point. Um, community center wasn't all complete, but there was a good chunk of it there. Um, we just do that because that's the year we have our last financial data from, so there will be a little bit of an increase again next year when the rest of the community center, that construction in progress from January 1st to, um, July, um, is complete on that end of it. And then touching base on the city hall piece, um, just to make sure that we understand kind of how we're depreciating that or, or charging rents. Since we look at this at December 31st, 2016, we are still charging rent for 2018 on the old city hall, which is obviously, we're not in anymore. Um, but again, the new city hall, we're only going to charge 35% at this point in time as well. Um, and that value then is of 123116, so I, I think the, this current city hall, we had three or four million dollars of, you know, probably four million dollars they have of the building costs at 123116. We're taking that amount times 35% for the rent in 2018, plus the old city hall, which was two million dollars over 50 years, so there isn't a whole lot of rent charged there. So that'll drop off in 2019, but we'll end up picking up the new building, the rest of the new building in 2019, so it might be a little give or take one way or another, but, um, may not be a whole lot because we're taking, we're taking a hundred percent of the old depreciation of the old building, and so we really got to sit down and think about what, what we want to do for this facility as well. Do we want to start charging a hundred percent of this building to rents, or are we fine at 35% for a number of years or what, so?
Council Lou? The rent that was being paid or collected on the old city hall, where is that going to be transferred to?
That goes into the building internal service fund. That goes towards all the building-related projects.
Is that going to be used for, uh, asbestos abatement on that old building or...
Uh, no, we would not. That would, if there's any asbestos-related stuff, it'd probably come out of, uh, a separate, we'd have a standalone fund to make sure that those costs are potentially reimbursed by something as well too. So we want to track those costs separately.
When the, uh, old city hall, Mayor, if the old city hall, when it comes off, can't we just transfer that straight over toward...
Absolutely.
The city hall and it would be a net neutral...
It's going to be pretty close to net, net neutral, but there might be a little give or take there on the actual calculations. But you're, you're correct, that, that depreciation will come over here, so.
And that won't really happen until 19, right?
No, 19.
When we get a full year on this and then, okay.
Yeah. Um, looking at some other services and charges that, uh, needed to, uh, be taken care of in the 2018 budget. Um, I kind of mentioned this, um, about a month ago or so in our, um, monthly, um, council reviews, is that the natural gas and electricity for the community center, uh, we're noticing that they're running higher than what we had anticipated at that point in time. Um, so right now, we're, we've included in the budget about a hundred and three thousand dollars for a combination of natural gas and electricity for the combination of those two facilities. I don't necessarily have the, the breakdown between the two, but, uh, between those two, we needed about an additional hundred thousand dollars.
We had asked to have that checked into to see if there's a reason, a negative reason why that's happening or if that's just normal. Has anything been checked on that or been found out?
Um, I can check with. Sounds like Jamie mentioned that it, it sounds like it is normal and that it, they did check into it, so it's kind of normal usage on, on that end of it, so.
Didn't we hear that maybe, uh, Spock was going to donate the electricity or something like that? I'm yawning over that.
We could try it.
Must've been a dream.
Could send them a Christmas card, maybe.
Right, right.
So, let's stay on that topic for a minute. Do we take the utility charges for that building and incorporate them into the operation of that building, meaning do we break it down by, okay, we're collecting these types of fees? A percentage of that's going for utilities, a percentage is going toward wages to see what our break-even point is, or, you know?
A different way to ask that is how many electric meters and how many gas meters do we have in that building?
Uh, Mr. Mayor, Councilmember Lehman, uh, we don't necessarily break it down by program.
Right.
Um, so we don't necessarily have a total cost of what each specific recreation program is with the operational expenses, you know, kind of ancillary other than the direct program costs. Um, but it could be, I mean, we could figure out a way to allocate that out.
By like ice arena and then the others?
Not, not program, but we do have...
We do have separate...
Yeah?
And to answer Councilmember Lou's question, we do have a separate meter for ice arena and community center.
Right.
Um, but we just don't have to break down by individual program of how much.
And we've been seeing that data all along in your monthly reports to build so a da, um, database, baseline information on gas and expenses for the hockey rink as well as revenues and, um, and then the other building. We're going to see the, the pool start coming online on that other aspect here in the, in the next couple of reports.
Well, that's my, the same point is that now that we, we know when the pool and the pumps started and, and, and that kind of thing, so we'll be able to see the difference in what that portion of it may be costing us.
Well, you got separate meters on the two, correct?
Yeah, yeah, absolutely. Two separate.
Should be easy.
We could, we could meter, uh, separate meter some of that stuff.
It already is.
In the pool area, but that's another expense.
The pool isn't, the pool isn't metered separate.
Community center and the ice arena, and we can see which one is...
It could be done for another expense.
Jamie, if you want to come up here with it, rather than, please.
Darren answered your question.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and Mr. Council. Um, Darren answered your question originally and then it just got changed here. Um, we do have one meter for the community center and one meter for the ice arena. The pool is not separate metered out, so...
It's part of the...
Right. So we will be able to see the difference in the bills as they come on, now that it's come on, but we don't have a separate meter for the pool.
Is that both gas and electric?
Correct.
But everybody understands, uh, we have two sheet sizes. We also have a pool, which we never had before, at least in the community center. And the facility is larger. We knew that there were going to be additional expenses as we're seeing, and, uh, and also we're going to enjoy some, uh, additional revenue as well as we've seen.
Okay.
So a couple other items under other services and charges that are changing, uh, a little bit from 2017 to 2018 is that, um, cleaning services for the police department and public works will be increasing by about sixty-eight thousand dollars. Um, and this is really just a, a shift from personnel to other services and charges. Um, we have reduced our, custodial staff has been reduced, um, by one, um, in that area, so, um, those savings there will be shifted over from personnel over to others, other charges and services. So it's basically a, a budget-neutral change at this point. Um, and then logists are, kind of our application support for a number of our different, uh, financial systems, our planning and development and such. Uh, we implemented, uh, not the permit works, but project docs this year. Um, and so there's an increased application cost there and along with the automated accounts payable system as well too. So, that's about nineteen thousand dollars in increased, um, application support.
I'm going back to that community service, uh, believe we had an email that said we had a net gain by losing one staff member and doing it outside house.
It's approximately twenty-six thousand dollars, Councilman.
Is it? Okay. So, all right. So that was my, my error on that point. There's actually a savings on, on the personnel versus the, the cleaning or the contracted services. Uh, revenues. Normally, in a general fund, revenues don't necessarily change a whole lot from year to year within a governmental fund. Um, obviously the economy will play a big factor in that if, you know, buildings permits are up or down and, and things like that. Um, our building permits have been strong for the last couple of years. Uh, we are projecting that to remain strong for next year as well. We do budget these fairly conservatively to make sure that we're, um, not being over zealous on our estimates, uh, but we are looking at increasing our, our building permits by 10% of our budget from last year. And we've been, at, at points in time of the year, we've already exceeded our budget. Um, I'm not sure exactly where we stand at this point in time, but I'd assume by, you know, October, we'll be hitting our 2017 budget there again as well too, so.
And we, we, we exceeded our budget expectations last year as well, our conservative budget expectations. And I'd rather be more conservative and then hopefully see some growth there rather than budget high and not make it.
I don't want to be ultra-conservative though either, be, because that affects your, your tax levy as well too. You want to be kind of, you want to be realistic of it, but you want to be on the, on the conservative side of that, that number. And I think we increased them a little bit for 17 and we're increasing now again for 18 as well too, so. Um, and then the community center. Uh, our community center memberships are all within the general fund. Our community center operations are all within the general fund. Um, Ms. Polly and I sat down for several hours, a couple of different times, to really look at memberships and, and really penciled them out of, okay, here's where our memberships are at. Here's if, you know, the current people renew, when they have to renew, when we're going to recognize that, um, those anticipated revenue dollars and such. And we really didn't, we took our membership numbers as of basically last, you know, the end of July basically, and didn't necessarily project those, that the membership numbers increased. We just projected that the membership rates would obviously increase, um, from now through 2018. And really took those membership numbers and, and projected them out and said, okay, this is going to generate X amount of dollars. And that came up to be about three hundred thousand dollars in, in membership increases and membership revenues. So, uh, we felt that was a, a, a good number, a conservative number yet, um, and not, not overzealous on that end of it and, and was...
And it's worth repeating here. So you're expecting an increase in the community center memberships for 2018 of, uh, four hundred thousand, you said, or, I got three hundred?
Uh, three, three hundred thousand dollars in the memberships, specifically just membership renewal dollars. And so that's taking our, our current membership levels as of the end of July and assuming that, that membership number is going to stay the same for 2018.
Good news, yeah.
It's not new revenue, it's projecting that that same number will continue to be a revenue stream.
Right. And hopefully, optimistically, obviously, you hope that your membership numbers actually grow. And I, I mean, I believe they will.
Yeah, and we talked about having memberships just to the pool or something like that, and if we ever do that, that's going to be a separate revenue stream.
There, there's daily fees and that may go up.
Yeah.
I think what we're seeing here, we saw a little memo on it a month ago or so, that, you know, the, the membership is rapidly increasing as well as the overall revenue, the rest of, most of the other revenue is coming from rented ice time that's filling up. And, uh, you know, this is, these are great signs. This is, this is what we want, folks to enjoy, uh, enjoy the community center, use it, become members, rent that ice, and we're, we're seeing the early fruits of our labor. rent that ice and we're, we're seeing the early fruits of our labor. Is that correct, Ms. Polly?
Yeah, and one thing I wanted to point out, Mr. Mayor, members of council, is that, um, when we did these numbers, we took into account that a large part of our membership took out a membership at the end of last year, which means that they'll be renewing at the end of this year at the current rates that we have. We do know that we have a planned increase for January first of twenty eighteen, but a lot of our membership will actually renew at the current rate, which is a little bit less than what we'll do January one, so then in twenty eighteen we should see that change again because they'll all be then at that next higher rate.
But we can't forget that we just saw the gas and electric bill increase that was above what, so they're kind of offsetting each other at this point.
Well, where there, where there's success, there's opportunities. Alright, thank you.
So then we're looking at overall recreation total revenues increasing about four hundred and thirty thousand dollars and that's ice and that's the swimming lessons, uh, all types of, of recreation type revenues, not just the memberships. The memberships are in that number, but um, this is all the other programming and rentals and such.
So if memberships are in there, you're looking at a hundred and thirty thousand dollar increase?
I'm sorry.
If memberships are included in the four thirty and the same three hundred thousand renew, you're expecting a one thirty increase.
Correct, but if you remember, the ice arena was basically at, for twenty seventeen, it, it would basically have a full year of operation in there because it, it went live right, right at the end of twenty sixteen, January first, twenty of twenty seventeen, so, um, ice arena revenues uh, will increase a little bit, but they won't be, it won't be like the membership renewals and things like that because it's already got a pretty much a full year of operation in there already, so. Um, looking at the EDA, we touched on the EDA a little bit last year, looking at, um, a potential levy that is specific to the EDA. The Economic Development Authority has the statutory authority to levy, um, a small percentage of the city's estimated market value. That percentage is point zero one eight three percent of your market value. So it's a small percentage, but it does add up on a, on a market value that we have around over four and a half billion dollars of market value. If you multiply that out by what your cap is on, on the city, that's about seven hundred and sixty eight thousand dollars of potential EDA levy dollars that are out there. Um, that's the maximum levy that you can have and the EDA and city council would then need to approve, they can approve any amount up to that cap. Um, so it's at your discretion of, of what amount that is at this, at this point. The, I'm sorry, it looked like council member Layman had a question.
I do, but you're in the middle of something.
Okay. Um, the EDA levy should be kind of considered a neutral budget change as well too, because in past years, we have been transferring EDA dollars a general fund levy, a general fund transfer to the EDA for both operations and, uh, for some capital things, um, facade loan improvement, those types of things in the past. We've done that five hundred thousand dollar transfer for the last three years.
Right.
Um, that all came from the general fund. We do operations, transfer to cover salary expense, um, grants, those types of things. Um, all comes out of the general fund at this point, so that's basically a levy within the general fund that you're transferring then out to the EDA. This is separating that, making it transparent that this is dedicated to EDA economic, economic development related, um, activities.
This is, uh, to me, uh, this looks more cleaner this way. Obviously not coming close to the maximum of it, but certainly if you're just general levying and then transferring it to the EDA now, and, you know, trying to do our very best on the overall levy and then have a levy here that's more cleaner, then there wouldn't be, uh, that transfer, like I said, three years of a half a million dollars for our downtown infrastructure plan.
Yeah, thanks, Mr. Mayor, and, and, and the most important point for me on this is, is that it's, it's very visible to the public so they can look at it and know exactly what we're doing. Currently, we levy and then later we transfer out of the general fund and to the EDA. There's certainly nothing wrong with that, but it's not really readily apparent to an individual who looks at that initial budget. And, and this just cleans it up.
Councilor Layman?
Question I had on that was, uh, legal uses of the EDA levy dollars.
Uh, whatever the EDA is statutory authorized to spend dollars on.
Because currently when, when we take general levy dollars and move them into the EDA, they're general levy dollars, so they're unrestricted in their use. EDA specific levy dollars are restricted in their use. So you, you lose that flexibility, I guess you'd call it.
I think in the, I think, well, I get where you're following, but if, if you made a transfer from a general to the EDA that has the same harbingerers that, that would be attached to the, it's, it's not un-unrestricted. Maybe you think about unrestricted in the general budget, but I think if you put it in the EDA that you have to follow the EDA things. Uh, our city attorney's not here, but I think once you get into that pot of money, then it becomes restricted to certain things.
Well, we'll certainly follow up on that one.
Right.
Yeah, I think you're correct, Mayor, and we'll certainly get the, the, what, what the boundaries are for.
And then the other question, um, the three fifty that is gonna, that you're proposing the levy for the EDA, which was normally levied in a general levy, so we're reducing the general levy by three fifty? Well, let me, let me restate that.
It would be in the levy.
Let me, let me restate that, because it's a separate levy line item on your property taxes. How much did we levy in the, how much of the general fund last year's budget was transferred to the EDA?
I believe it was about seven hundred and fifty thousand or so, because we had the five hundred thousand dollar general or that downtown improvement part. I believe we had two hundred and fifty thousand dollars for operational and I, I believe last year we didn't do the facade loan program because we had.
There was enough in there.
Because we had enough in another fund to transfer over to that fund, so. Uh, but we reduced that by, I think it was a hundred and fifty five or sixty five thousand or something for that.
So if you put them numbers together, I'm not, not looking at the downtown improvement numbers, I'm looking at the operational money that we put in from the general fund to the EDA. I want to make sure that what we, what's normally moving from the general fund to the EDA is consistent with what you're proposing.
It is. The only difference is, Councilor Layman, is that, as, uh, Mr. Nelson pointed out, last year we had, we looked at our, our facade grant program and made the determination not to put more money into it at that point.
Right.
So, uh, this year, we do need to. Uh, but even then, I don't think it's that different if you knock out the five hundred thousand.
Right, you're talking probably two hundred for the one and maybe fifty or seventy thousand.
Yeah, I, I don't have the breakdown of the.
We can, we can certainly.
In there, but it's, it's gonna be pretty close to that, that three fifty amount that we're at.
That's a, that's a good question.
But that dollar amount then is subtracted from the general fund.
It, it has been, yes, but obviously there's new expenditures on the, on the general fund that.
Right.
Beats up some of that, but yes, absolutely has been.
Because my general fund addition says an increase is about one point two, one point three million total?
Correct. And we'll get there. Uh, one point about the EDA levy itself is that it goes against, um, all taxable market values. So any properties that are currently in a tax abatement or in a TIF, um, district themselves, they will still pay the EDA levy itself and go rate strictly.
Right, on their full value.
On their full.
Correct.
Not the, not the previously unimproved or the difference, it's on the total value.
And if I'm not. So, so if you have a concern about TIF, I mean, this is a way for us to address those issues.
For the whole value.
And I believe it's a year leg for some reason or another that, I think it was back when there was homestead market value credit and things like that, that it's a year leg, so that's, it goes back to January first of twenty sixteen, I think.
On the value.
On the value for taxes payable in twenty eighteen for the EDA levy, but it does catch up eventually on that end of it, so.
Just one last question. The three fifty that you're proposing is forty nine percent of our cap roughly?
Uh, yeah, it's approximately half, yeah. And as, uh, council member Layman mentioned earlier, the EDA will be a separate line on your tax statement as well too. So when you get your proposed, um, truth and taxation statements this fall, um, there'll be a separate line at the bottom. It's not included with the city levy. Um, but it is, obviously it's the city council or EDA authorizing that levy, but it's a separate line item on your taxes as.
And then residents could call the EDA president if they needed to for any discussion.
Correct. Oh, and there's a little table. Uh, and we are recommending, as we mentioned, a three hundred and fifty thousand dollar levy for, for eighteen and that would be about a twenty dollar, um, impact on a, on a house valued at two hundred and twenty nine thousand dollars last year or about two hundred and forty two thousand dollars this year, so.
So actually you're setting the dollar amount and then adjusting that rate to match that dollar amount off that entire tax value.
Correct. The county will have to, we tell the county the dollar amount, they want to levy and they'll back into that rate for that.
Rather than setting it at five percent and seeing how many dollars come in, it's, it's more dollar specific with a cap on it.
It can be, it can be either way. Up, you could do a percentage up to that.
Yeah.
Small percentage as well too. I know there are cities that do that, that'll say we're gonna max, or we're gonna max levy out at the point oh one eight five percent or three percent and we don't care what the dollar amount is, but.
But that specifically goes against the philosophy that we've been working on for the last three years, where we're specifically identifying revenue streams and specifically identifying expenses and trying to come as close as we can for that.
Right.
As opposed to just kind of saying, we're gonna take the max of everything and then roll it in.
Exactly, and I, that's why that, I think to do it this way and a dollar amount versus the rate amount, do the dollar amount, let the rate fall where, where it is rather than that. That's why I asked that question.
So, the, uh, the two twenty nine property on this page, this is showing levy comparison of a thirty four dollar tax increase. Does that include the, the EDA levy or not?
That doesn't, that does not include the EDA levy there, that chart there.
But, we'll get to it in a minute.
Yeah.
But that, 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 that total increase is purely valuation. It has absolutely, it's something that we can't, we can't control. If, if, if we weren't looking at the EDA, our net request is essentially zero to your average, uh, 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 average homeowner. But because of valuation, the, the valuation that has raised between five and ten percent in the last year, taxes will go up, but it's not anything that the city has done, it is simply because of valuation.
This is saying with no evaluation increase.
There's fixed values on the fee.
This is what it says.
That's for the increased value.
Okay, well, we'll have to clarify that.
Yeah, we'll get, we'll get to that. There's, so it's, it's basically new growth is what's causing that. And it's, it's the shift in property valuations between commercial and residential and, and such, but it's, um, new growth can account for the entire city levy increase, not the EDA levy increase, but the city levy increase. And we can get that, that a couple of slides and we'll get right to that, so. Touching on debt service real quick, last year we obviously brought on the tax abatement bonds for the community center. Tax, or tax lev- or debt service levy will remain constant now for, until we issue any more debt. Um, that's at about two point two million dollars annually now. Uh, we will need to come forward to council in September, we have a couple of resolutions to reduce. Uh, the required debt service, when you issue debt, the county is given a, a debt service schedule and so it has principal and interest payments, and so if you want to levy anything less than what was initially given to the county, you have to provide them with a resolution stating, you know, why are you doing that? Because you need to levy this amount. Unless you have a good reason, and we do have a good reason, we have funds available in those, in those accounts to, uh, make sure they're viable for the, the future.
So that, those resolutions would be to reduce the portion of the levy that's designed to go to debt.
Right, exactly. Um, so looking at the levy overall, staff has recommended a two point five percent levy increase, which is about four hundred and eighty eight thousand, four hundred and eighty nine thousand, and then the preliminary EDA levy of three hundred and fifty thousand.
And if I may, this is the max levy that you're going to see and it will come down. Uh, we're being conservative on this end here as well, because as, uh, Mr. Nelson pointed out, we don't know what our health insurance costs are gonna be. We don't know what the impact of our comp and class is gonna be. I think our health insurance may be a little higher and our, our comp and class, uh, should be substantially lower. But that being said, uh, this is the max levy that, that you would be approving, and then when we come back later, you can expect to see a reduction.
So this is the preliminary.
Correct.
And that's the highest, if we approve the preliminary, that's the highest it can go and it can only go down when by the time you get to a final in December.
Correct. So looking at the, the growth, we mentioned that there was eight and a half percent growth for, in tax capacity for taxes payable twenty eighteen. That's on top of eight percent growth from taxes payable twenty seventeen. And new construction accounts for about twenty five percent of that new tax capacity, or that additional tax capacity, so obviously that seventy five percent area is valuation changes, is that current property is increasing valuation, but we did have one point one million dollars in, in new tax capacity, which is substantial.
Big deal.
When you take that times your tax rate of thirty eight percent, um, that's where you get into that, that number of, of, kind of that four hundred and eighty eight thousand dollars is that all of that levy increase that we're looking at can be attributed to, to new growth and that if we took away any valuation changes, if every property, commercial, residential, uh, industrial, whatever, remained the same from twenties, from taxes payable twenty seventeen to taxes payable twenty eighteen, the city could levy an additional four hundred and eighty eight thousand dollars and every taxpayer's tax statement for the city would stay the same.
For the city's portion.
Because there's those.
The city, yeah.
Because there would be new commercials, there would be new.
That's separate from the EDA levy.
That's separate from the EDA.
Yeah, correct.
Which is an increase by itself.
Correct. And you look at it in totality, yes. So looking at the, the breakdown, here's an analysis, we're kind of a, a table of the last couple of years of the tax levies um, compared to the twenty eighteen proposed. We've got our, our general fund levy, um, increasing about six hundred and seventy three thousand. Um, the abatements we brought in last year, uh, those are, so now that we're tightening things up on our budget wise, the abatements we have to levy for because we have to take that out of our tax proceeds and, and send it on to, um, the, the appropriate parties. And so we need to account for that in our, in our levy, where we don't have excess funds available. Capital improvement fund, uh, we started a levy there last year. We're actually reducing that levy by about a hundred and eighty five thousand dollars this year. That is due to, uh, we got a small shift in our MSA funds. We're actually getting some more construction dollars in the capital improvement fund and getting a little bit less maintenance dollars in our general fund, so we're shifting that um, tax levy to keep each fund kind of equal there on that end of it. And then our debt service is ob- obviously staying about the same, so we're looking at about four hundred and eighty eight thousand or four hundred and eighty nine thousand or two point five percent increase for the city levy and then the EDA market value levies below there, which the four point four three percent isn't a true number because it's based off of not tax capacity, but it's based off of market value, so you're not taxing quite the same people in a market value levy as you are a, a tax capacity levy, so. But it, and for all respective purposes, it's about four point four three percent, um, increase for, for twenty, twenty eighteen.
With the, our tax capacity is the main driver here that's helping us with our levy and therefore our tax rate.
Correct, so that city levy, that four hundred and eighty eight thousand rate there is that, well, we talked about that, that growth piece is that. That's being absorbed by the new growth coming into the city. Not the new value, just the new growth.
Oh, right.
Well, if you built a hundred million dollar plant, you now have that hundred million dollar tax capacity, which would lower.
It's not, that's not the tax capacity.
Yeah, yeah, tax capacity, you're.
Your valuation.
Valuation.
Increases the value of your community by that, that dollar amount. And then when you apply your multipliers to that valuation to find your total tax, tax capacity, but what helps your revenue side is that that hundred million dollar factor actually pays taxes. That's what helps your revenue side.
Absolutely.
Build up that tax capacity, that's a, number one.
Well, and that's great as long as they pay taxes.
Right.
So if we look at our property valuations, uh, last year we talked about our property, the residential property stayed basically flat. They actually, the average home value decreased by a few hundred dollars, I think it was. It was two hundred and twenty nine thousand, six hundred, down to two hundred and twenty nine thousand, one hundred or so. For taxes payable twenty eighteen, which is a valuation done on January first of twenty seventeen, uh, which valuation notice is when it came out this past spring, those in, home, the homes now are seeing an increase in, in valuation. About eighty percent of the homes in Shaka, you saw a five to ten percent increase in valuation on January first, twenty seventeen, which is your taxes payable twenty eighteen. Um, so that, the average value of home went up now to just over two hundred and forty three thousand dollars, so. when you see things like that, there's obviously gonna be a shift. Last year when it was flat on the residential side of it and we still saw tax capacity increases, while there was new construction on there too, but there's also value there. So somebody else is picking up that value change last year if, if residential stayed flat. So that put a shift last year, last year probably on commercial and industrial property saw probably a bigger tax increase than what, um, the residents did because residents was basically flat. I think the average home.
Except for mine, of course.
Each individual home was different.
Return this year.
Mine only was up.
So as I mentioned, the, the, uh, twenty seventeen, there was a, a shift there and now twenty eighteen, as the residential properties now are appreciating, they're not flat no longer, um, there's gonna be a shift back towards the residential. And that's why we're seeing that increase in, in taxes, even though we're, we're basically basing the, the gen, the city levy on new growth. So here's a chart I got from the county and I got this late last year. So I had them give it to me early this year to kind of show the change for each different kind of grouping of classification. You can obviously see the homes valued from, you know, two hundred and fifth or three hundred thousand dollars and under saw, you know, five to eight and a half percent increase in valuation. Uh, and the, the more expensive homes saw a smaller increase in that, in that valuation. Um, but overall it was a five point eight percent increase in, um, average home or within the homes within Shakopee for, for paid eighteen. Kind of an interesting graph and how that.
It's kind of ironic that the lower priced houses see the biggest hit.
Yeah, and it's the market demand. It's, you know, the, the market out there of what, what the demand is and it's, uh, uh, obviously a higher demand for the lower valued, um, housing opportunities.
So, we'll go back on that chart.
Yeah.
Is that, uh, so you're saying that there's, uh, eleven thousand nine hundred housing units in the city of Shakopee?
These are residential.
Residential.
Residential, because it's an apartment or anything like that. These are strictly.
Homes.
Single families.
Single family for the most part, homes.
Duplexes. Duplexes.
Yeah, yeah.
Okay. Um, I always find this chart, I struggle with this chart too, Matt. Um, but a much more expensive house may have a smaller increase, but I'll bet you their overall base is higher.
Total tax base.
But I know you and I have talked about the values of the houses and the, the increase in the value and, and then in this, in the middle, your house stays flat and your taxes go up or down by three dollars.
Well, one, one of the interesting, uh, points that, uh, Mr. Nelson made earlier, uh, Mr. Mayor, is that, uh, it, it's demand driven in a lot of respects. There's a high demand for your lower income housing. That's what you're seeing here. There's not a lot of demand for houses that are five hundred to, to a million dollars or more.
And I look at our, our stock and that's why I asked the question of housing. They're saying in a, uh, between a hundred and two hundred, uh, fifty-three hundred units out of our eleven-nine is under two hundred thousand. That's a pretty good number there as far as balance of community. And then it, you know, you, as you climb the ladder of jumbo houses, you slowly get smaller and smaller and smaller.
Only you and Jay got the nine hundred million dollar house.
Yeah, I want to know which two houses those are. They're overpricing my one bedroom Rambler, I'll tell you that.
So here's the impact, uh, that we're gonna show on, on kind of the three, last year we did this, we're kind of show three different valuation of homes, kind of lower, middle and, and upper valued homes and what the tax impact of that is. And it's kind of curious to look at it over a kind of two-year timeframe as well too, knowing that, you know, last year we had a seven point four seven percent increase in our levy, but the impact was, was virtually nulle. And that was, you know, a lot of that's due to that, um, valuation being flat. Now this year we got a, you know, half that size increase in the levy. Um, and really there's no impact because of the new growth is in there, but this is basically valuation changes is that, that, that lower valued home at a hundred and sixty thousand dollars is seeing a bigger increase in, in, you know, saw that six or seven percent increase in valuation, whereas that upper valued home only saw, you know, two or three percent increase in valuation. So, um, the tax impact is, is quite a bit, you know, it's almost half of what it is for the upper valued home on that end of it. So.
I really think we need to show this with a separate line item of the E, EDA tax applied also.
Yeah, and this, and so the middle, it would basically be the middle column there, that two hundred and forty-three thousand dollar home would see twenty dollars on top of that. So it'd be fifty-four dollars, um, tax impact.
And that's the mean, average, mean value of a home in Shakopee.
Correct, correct.
And that steadily moved up in the last.
Well, it went down last year.
Went down last year.
Down, but about eight years ago, I think it was around a hundred and ten. It's slow, you know, obviously the market's coming back to where it was, um, pre, pre-two thousand eight.
Right. So here's just a, a quick levy comparison as well too. I know, um, last year I know the mayor had kind of requested some of this stuff and this is.
We don't have that page, do we?
No, we don't. I, I saw this and I was looking at my presentation from last year. I'm like, hey, wait a second.
We're gonna need this.
We're gonna need this, yes.
This is an important chart.
I'll get it out to you. So I can send it out, out to you as well too. I got one or two other chart graphs in here too that I just wanted to throw in there for informational purposes. But it shows the levy change, um, your tax rate over the last ten years, um, your tax capacity, uh, those types of things, your levy increase and such. And I think I did the average, I just calculated quickly what the average levy increase over that ten years. And obviously there was some bad economic times in the two thousand and ten era as well too, um, where the levy was flat or negative at that point in time. Um, but I think it came out to be about three point five percent or something like that was the average, um, levy change over that ten year timeframe. And actually two thousand and eight, there was like, I think about eleven percent increase in the levy. So that one kind of dropped off as ten years sliding scale, but.
So just a point of clarification, you know, last year it was seven and a seven point four seven, this year four point four three, but that does include the EDA.
EDA levy, because I know the, the prior years when I did this last year, I included, we had an EDA levy back two thousand and eight, two thousand and nine, ten, somewhere in that ballpark. Um, and so I included those dollars. I don't think it was much of a levy. I think it was, you know, fifty, sixty thousand dollars or something to that nature. But that was in there. So I wanted to make sure it was included in here too to kind of give a, a complete picture.
Or somewhere in here it was like a two point five eight percent increase.
That's without the EDA.
Without the EDA.
Without the EDA.
EDA is another two.
Basically, yeah, pretty close.
But, but a point I want to make and I think it's important, um, you know, as, as we started this year and last year, we talked about what the goals were of the, of the city when it came to financial, uh, budget. Essentially it was low taxes, financial stability and a stable tax rate. Um, this budget does all three of those and actually lowers our tax rate. So even with the EDA, our tax rate is being lowered.
I get that, the shift. I get that.
But that's normal, Councilman Layman. One of those things that you always stick me on is that you want to make sure that that tax rate is stable.
Yep, absolutely.
And those points that Mr. Reynolds just brought up, um, were derived right off, right off of our goal plan that we set. Stability, tax rate, fiscal responsible, transparent.
Low taxes.
Tax rate, low taxes. I'll add that.
So this chart's a little, little busy to look at, but it's your, the blue line is your levy change from year to year. Um, and then the orange bars are basically the total levy over the last ten years or so. Um, so you see your levy increases that are decreases and such over those ten years.
The other piece that's important to understand about this particular budget is that this then sets the stage for that blue line to continue to fall. Because if you think about it, uh, we've established everything in this three-year period that we wanted to do in regards to basically changing the internal operations of this budget. Now, we, we, we're essentially right sizing the organization, if you will, with a pretty healthy request, frankly, when it comes down to personnel. If you think about our horizon and what we then have to think about in the future in regards to either building or, 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 or personnel, that's relatively small. So that blue line is going to continue to go down. And that's that important piece of this whole thing.
Well, I think there's another big piece that's not being talked about is that, that blue line where it is for eighteen is absorbing these additional costs that we didn't have a firm number on, the operational side of the community center. We now know that the gas, electricity is higher than anticipated, which is built into that, correct?
And we also know that our revenues are higher than anticipated.
Right. Um, and that's gonna be played out a little further.
Yeah, and, and, and so, um, as we, as we stated, uh, you know, we wanted to make sure that we're taking a look, it's gonna take a year for operation before we know what that's going to be.
Um, other, Darren?
Oh, yeah. Then just, here's our tax capacity and tax rate comparison as well too. So the orange line is your tax rate. Uh, it was, you know, thirty-eight percent or so last year and twenty eighteen we're ju- projecting that to actually drop. Even with the EDA levy, um, included in this, it would be, you know, thirty-seven. I think it drops almost a percent or point nine percent anyway at that point.
There, you know, I'm a big one on this. You grow that tax capacity and you can have a lower tax rate.
And then, uh, just lastly here is that, this, the proportion of your taxes. Every year we get calls, you know, saying, why are my taxes going up? And I'm sure you guys feel the same calls and, and you look at it and it's, you know, not necessarily the city, it's maybe a different taxing jurisdiction. If it's the city or the school or the county or, or whatnot, it's just that kind of educational piece that really the city has control over a third, basically, more or less of, of their total tax bill. And so, um, we can only control what's, what's ours and, and, yeah, ours is about a third of it.
And the other part of that is that valuation, part of it, your values go up and your numbers go up.
Yep.
But as we had at our me, our meeting in December last year when a resident came through with a couple of different tax statements, he was talking about his value jumped so high and therefore his taxes are so high in his city. But the evaluations as Darren brought out earlier was set back in January. We got that notice in late January. And those hearings about the value of your home, it was in May for the value. And then here jurisdictions are applying their levy based off those values.
Correct. And, and we have no control over the valuation of the property whatsoever. That's totally within the hands of the county.
So, on the property tax statement, it says other taxing districts, it's like two bucks.
Mosquito control.
Nobody seems to know who that is.
Um, and I believe the EDA would be separate. It, it would say.
It's not ours.
No, that's.
No, but, but in that, in that other taxing districts, you got, you know, mosquito control district, you have your watershed district, you have, um, met, met council transportation.
They're a separate line.
There is another line that is miniscule. You're right, it's other and it is very small and I don't.
Watershed I know is probably one of those specifically. Those are.
So.
Soil and water, maybe you get to.
They should all have phone numbers.
Who do I talk to to get a name put to this guy named other taxing district that's on a beach.
Call the county.
The county don't know. The state does know. He seems to know the answer to these questions. It's not really a city issue, so I just shouldn't bring it up.
But we can educate the, the public on that as well too. I mean, that, that, that should be known. I mean, it's part of everybody's tax bill. Let's, let's figure out what's, what those taxing jurisdictions, jurisdictions are and figure out the appropriate context for that. Uh, we can sure do that as a staff too that'll be able to promote that information on our website that says it goes where. So then lastly here's just our, our, again, our thirty thousand foot general fund budget at, at the moment. We're obviously with our, including the, the tax levy that we discussed tonight at that level, um, looking at our new revenues, looking at, uh, licenses and permits and things like that as well too, um, community center memberships. Um, and expenditures obviously include all the personnel, some of those fixed costs that we talked about, um, that were gas and electric and such like that. And it isn't, we don't necessarily have a budget that's split out by department quite yet. It's just all in, uh, kind of general program type of, or category at this point in time. So, um, we are balanced at this point in time. We've, in the past, I know a twenty sixteen budget, I think we budgeted a deficit of a couple hundred thousand, if not four hundred thousand.
Five hundred thousand.
Um, and we typically, I think we were short in staff the last couple of years. We've had budget surpluses and such. We're obviously tightening, tightening that up as, um, Administrator Reynolds has, has mentioned numerous times over the last time that I've been here and such. And we've done a good job of, of doing that. And I think even through this budget cycle from the preliminary levy to the final, uh, we'll be looking at budgets again as well too and, and tightening up where we can tighten up and, um, keep on making this a, a better budget each and every year. So that's about all I have. Any other questions or concerns or?
Questions, comments, discussion?
Is now the time to get into the seven positions?
Yes.
Okay.
And then if the particular s- staff member would want to come up and discuss with them depending on.
Well, maybe an easier way to do it would be to have a, you know, some kind of a typed up something defining what exactly that position, what, what's drawing the need for the position, what the position's gonna be doing, um, short of a summary.
Okay.
Yeah, we, we can, uh, we can certainly do that for each one of the positions and also outline, um, some of the internal changes that have, uh, acquired, uh, some of the requests, for example, like the lifeguards. Um, uh, you know, obviously having a full-time daily pool kind of drove that.
I know in the past we used, uh, like what, part-time, certain hour, uh, contracted lifeguards or whatever. So now we're, we're changing and going to an internal full-time lifeguard staff.
Yeah, a- and, and the short answer and the reason for that is, is that the part-timers are normally college students.
Yeah.
Right.
You had an outdoor seasonal pool with, during the summer, that was a college, high school job. And now we have a three sixty-five pool indoor.
And, and, and lifeguards have been traditionally tough to recruit even for the summers. Uh, so, you know, recognizing that if we're going to have a pool and it's gonna be operational, we need to have the people there to make sure it's safe. So, but no, we can certainly go through each one of these and, and.
Counselor Wyman?
Yeah, I, I, I think I'd like to go through a few of these. I think lifeguards is not one of them. I, I see that we have a pool, full-time pool. I'm not gonna argue the point that we don't need lifeguards.
That wasn't my question.
Right, I know, but, but I'm not saying that. But I think I do want to talk about a few of these other ones.
All right, I want to follow up on, um, so Counselor Lehman wanted to maybe hear more about this. And now I hear you do, but you wanted, uh, Mr. Reynolds, you said maybe at another meeting, you would write something up?
Well, no, what we'll do is we'll have that coming up before the decision, uh, processes. We'll have it next week or so.
More information on the specific seven folks.
But we have all the department heads here that can kind of talk through why, uh, we're making the proposals that we are.
Is that acceptable to you to hear more at a later date with more detail?
Um, I'm the one that asked for more detail about each position and, I mean, it, I don't think it's an unfair question about the lifeguards. It's, I'm not saying I don't want lifeguards. I'm, I'm trying to understand the bigger picture of we're going from a, in the past of having seasonal, you know, part-time contracted people to a different type of setup. And it's good to know this, how this operational thing is functioning. Um, I get it, three sixty-five, there's a lot of hours to cover. Um, and, and, you know, police typically in the past, police department has kind of looks at its population. They've got some formula they use based on population of, of cops per thousand or whatever it is. You know, we've got code enforcement happening now. Are we doing more of it? What's changing? Just kind of an overview of each one of these would kind of give us a good picture and we don't have to spend all night doing it right now at the podium.
Yeah, no, that's fine.
You know, we could do it again at a later time once we have all that information in the paragraph or whatever.
Well, I think tonight's the night when everybody shows up.
Yeah, yeah, fine. Do it both ways. I'm good with that too.
And, and I think, uh, some of it is a philo, a philosophical change. Uh, the code enforcement is certainly that. Uh, and, and you're right, that, that is something that probably requires more discussion than police officers in general. Um, but, uh, uh, you know, we can, we can, we can do the initial run-through with the department heads tonight, certainly get that information, uh, to you in more detail, uh, then in the next week or so. And then also if you have questions, you know, we can also research that and bring it back to you.
Just to clarify my point, uh, and I appreciate them all being here. I, I don't think we need to spend a lot of time on lifeguards. This is what my point is.
Well, he wants to hear more.
Well, I get it, but I mean tonight because I understand the need. That's all I would say.
Right, right. I'm looking for the more internal structure type information.
Do we want to hold, we want to have, we could do the, uh, set the preliminary tonight and during the next several meetings, one of them, have broader discussion.
Well, we won't set the preliminary tonight.
Okay.
This is merely a workshop to kind of work through the issues and, uh, talk in general. Uh, we will be setting the preliminary levy nineteenth.
Nineteenth of September.
Okay, I apologize.
In any direction from the council, obviously.
So, yeah, so we have some time to work and we can even bring stuff back on the fifth if you'd like to, in more detail as well. So.
And even then, if, if we, on the nineteenth, we do a maximum levy, that's, we can come back and tweak it down, just can't go up.
Absolutely.
Is everybody comfortable with that? Any more, we'll have more detailed. Is everybody comfortable with that? Any more, we'll have more detailed, uh, information on rationale?
Why don't we ask questions tonight?
Well, no, you know, if you guys want to wait, I, I think it was, I, I was. Why don't we look at this as an introduction into.
Okay.
Positions and then, and then we'll, then we'll come back with, uh, with detailed memos, uh, uh, either on the fifth or then probably the nineteenth. Considering the fifth is next Tuesday. Uh, uh, but then at that time, uh, you know, if there are more questions that we need to go into, we can, we, we, we can dive in. Some of them you may not have any questions on, others you may. So, let's just consider this an introduction to, uh, to our requests, uh, from staff then.
Okay. So, um, everybody is good? More questions, less questions?
Are we gonna?
I thought we were gonna hit it.
Okay, go ahead.
Are we gonna have introductions of?
Yeah.
I think so.
So, so.
So, do we want to do police first?
I, I think how I would look at it is let them come up and tell us their justification for their position.
Okay, why don't we just go down the list? So, uh, we've got fire, we have an assistant chief, uh, training position.
All right.
And if Chief Coleman can come up, uh, and I don't know if, uh, if Brian will be joining us as well, but.
Welcome, I always like to start. How you guys doing?
You are recommending a, a new position here for your department?
Correct. We needed a, a new assistant chief, uh, to be a full-time position. Um, basically we're looking at, back in two thousand twelve, I came and we started talking about the third station. That third station is getting really close. I think we need to really seriously start thinking about. And the assistant chief was the first step in that process, um, to get that going because we gotta start looking at daytime training. Um, really looking at how the whole operations, uh, runs at the fire department. We're gonna have to increase our staff. You know, to man that next station, how do we get them people trained? My, my biggest thought is that we will build a, do more training during the day. We'll build just more organizational. Just an important position to, the next step in the fire department, moving to that third station.
Counsel Rowan?
Uh, you mentioned doing it during the day. You have a lot of people, uh, still on the paid-on call that are probably, a lot of them working.
Right, right now we still, w- we're still only training on a Monday night. And we have a lot of our folks that miss a lot of Monday nights, so they don't get the, all the training that I believe and the state believes they should have to keep their certifications up. So we, we need to start offering training more often so these people can, if they can't make it on the Monday night, we can get them on a Tuesday night or maybe a Tuesday afternoon or a Wednesday afternoon.
So you're not, so what you're saying is that this is not necessarily gonna be an eight to five position. It's gonna be some, some daytime times and then flexibility.
Correct, it'll be a solid position. So, you know, if he works Tuesday nights or Wednesday nights and he may be off on Thursday afternoon for a while or whatever, so it won't be a strictly an eight to four job.
What, what, um, outside of training, what would this, uh, position do for you, chief?
Well, for me, we, we, we have a lot of our SOGs, uh, that need to be rewritten and looked at every year. That's something that I do right now. It'd be nice to have another set of eyes on for somebody else to say, well, this is, this is what the industry is doing and just not having one person. And then to have another backup, um, most city departments has, have a backup person. Uh, I'll go, another person to go to, you know. I don't want to name other departments, but everybody has a second-in-command that can fill in. We don't have that position right now.
You have no assistant chiefs right now?
Paid-on call, but nothing there full-time.
Just have the salaried officers.
Correct.
Other questions?
At what point would this, uh, uh, assistant chief be responding to calls?
They would be responding to calls when, when needed be. I mean, if they're working during the day, they'd be responding to calls.
Yeah.
Um, if, you know, at night, uh, you know, I don't see them responding to every call at night, you know, but they'd be responding to calls that were major calls. Um, right now it's, it's. With not having another full-time person obligated to respond, it, it falls back onto my shoulders to make sure somebody shows up to that fire call. If nobody else is going, I have to go. So.
And we don't give you vacation, right?
Well, you do give me vacation, but at the end of the day.
So that person would be there.
At the end of the day, I'm, there's nobody, as a paid-on-call firefighter, they're great people. Don't get me wrong, I love them to death. Without them, the city could not have a fire department. They do not have to respond. There's nothing that says they have to go. They have to make their thirty-five percent and that's it. So, as, in nineteen, what is it, nineteen ninety-seven, we built station two. We had forty-six firefighters. It's two thousand seventeen, we have forty-six firefighters. We have not increased our staff to keep up with the demands. Um, so we need to start building this fire department to get to station three. And this is the first step in that.
And, and one of the realities is, uh, we have a very high attrition rate for firefighters. Most, those volunteer fire departments do. I shouldn't say volunteer. Most paid-on-call, uh, fire departments do. Uh, in our first five years, we're losing.
About half. So if we hire five, we're gonna lose two, two and a half. Um, they last, and it, and it's not because it's hard work. It's hard work, I shouldn't say that. It's family life. I mean, they can't.
It's time commitment.
It's time commitment. They, they can't be leaving their families all the time and it's, and it's two years of schooling right out of the gate. And they get through that two years of schooling and their, their spouse or their family or whoever they're with, um, they, they have to start choosing sometimes and they choose their family and I don't blame them for doing that.
Other comments, questions, uh, Counsel Lehman?
In the, uh, short write-up that we get, can we get a, uh, salary justification for each one of these?
Yes, sir.
I have a job description written up that we can share with you too.
Just a, one last question. Are you seeing culturally that you're getting less and less people volunteering, uh, when you have a call for new firefighters? Is that pool starting to drop?
Yeah, I, I would say back, uh, I don't know, if I went back five years, we were getting somewhere between thirty and thirty-five people to apply. Now, were they all qualified? That's, now we're down and we're getting in that fifteen range with about half. And now, once we, once we start doing all the psychological evaluations and the background checks that we, we need to be doing, it really weeds them all down.
The attrition rate and actually the, the, the will to serve, both in fire and here in a minute we'll hear from police.
I mean, we.
I know the, um, fire chief of Eden Prairie very well and, uh, and discussions all the time. It's unfortunate, young people do not want to enter this profession anymore and the duty to call, uh, the call of duty is, uh, not as compelling as it used to be in, in generational families, um, which is, uh, unfortunate. But it's certainly, you know, it's an industry thing of for the, for the fire department.
I don't want to see the paid-on-call completely go away. And with this position, I'm hoping to draw more people that we can do more training during the day and try to accommodate these paid-on-call folks.
All right, so, uh, more to come then. If there's no other questions, job description breakdown of, okay. Um, chief, thank you.
You're welcome.
All right, next up.
All right, we'll have Chief Tate.
Chief Tate, couple items here and, uh.
Thank you, Mayor, members of council. The police department is asking for one full-time code compliance officer that will start January first. Uh, our CSO has many other duties and responsibilities aside from code enforcement. Historically, our department has been reactionary, uh, complaint-based in our code enforcement. With that said, as of yesterday at four o'clock, we've had over a thousand, uh, code complaints. Most of them are parking. But we've had over a thousand complaints in, in a year. Our current, uh, CSO has twenty-five active cases. And I, after asking her, uh, and walking out the door, I heard two come over the radio. So it's probably more like, uh, twenty-seven. Based on the community survey that was done, uh, the community has expressed an interest in having more code enforcement. To do that, we're going to need additional staff. We cannot do more code enforcement right now than what we're, we're currently doing. There's a few other things that, when we looked at this carefully, how do we, how do we address this issue? How do we get somebody in the chair that can do this long-term? Over the last ten years, if you look at our CSOs, the average ten years, eight and a half months, and that's an industry average. It's not a career, it's, it's a stepping, uh, stone for, for those individuals. Where we've been our most efficient and effective is when we've had people that have been in the position more than a year. The city code book's over nine hundred pages and it can be complicated. And sometimes it's all we can do just to get them up to speed quick on weeds and, and grasslands. Um, we think that this position would, you know, um, again, aim it, it would be a step increase in terms of pay grade. Uh, so we would look for somebody that would be able to fill this position long-term. The other thing is that, um, we would have the ability, this person to coordinate better with other departments in the city. Right now, again, with all the other duties that the CSO is doing, and they would keep doing those duties. This would be an excellent opportunity for better coordination, um, better, uh, workflow and efficiencies in, in terms of code with other, uh, city departments as well. Allow for this person to become an expert in a lot of different things. In terms of the cost, one thing we're kind of excited about with this position, if you choose to, to go with it, is our animal control. This is an opportunity here, uh, to get out from underneath our animal co- uh, control contract. Right now that is currently twenty-nine thousand four hundred dollars. It used to be in the thirties, mid-thirties, about thirty-four, thirty-five. And years ago we renegotiated that. It's gonna be due for another renegotiation. I assume that that would go up. Uh, we've identified a few kennels in the area that we would be able, that this person would able, be able to take a hundred and thirteen dogs that we impounded last year and take it to a kennel that residents would be able to go on our border. And we would be able to take that twenty-nine, a good chunk of that twenty-nine thousand four hundred and apply it to the seventy, approximate seventy thousand, um, five hundred. So, uh, more than a third of the cost really, um, would, would go down with this position.
So the animal control savings is not reflected in the wages on this? Okay.
No, this is just the, the base wages.
And then the, uh, the, would this be, would this position be focusing on a complaint basis? You mentioned like a thousand or something like that, or would it be seeking issues itself?
Well, and that's, and that's part of that phil- philosoph- philosophical conversation I think council needs to talk about. Because currently, it is complaint basis.
Right.
And, and, and then, you know, people get a little frustrated, well, why isn't the city addressing this problem? And the reason is, is because if nobody complains about it, we don't actively go out and look for things.
Well, if they're saying, why ain't you addressing this problem, they're complaining. So that's a complaint, isn't it not?
Well, at that point it is, but you have a level of frustration is what I'm saying. Is, you know, they're looking at it every day and wondering, why isn't the city addressing this particular issue? And, and the reality is, is the reason we're not doing it is because no one's complained about it.
You see the complaints on social media rather than in the official complaint file maybe, or the call to us rather than filing an official complaint.
This would allow us to be more proactive in, in our code enforcement. Again, as some, as people get, I mean, DeSantis has been on the job now a few months. And she's just kind of now starting to get that comfort level. Code enforcement is difficult. It's an art. And it can, it can take a lot of time to get a property that's been going downhill for several years and, and to get that person to, to come around. It's, um, it's a lot of work. It's a lot of follow-up.
And there is.
If we want to do more, this would be the, the way.
Proactive, build relationships in conjunction with, uh, uh, residential com- um, calling complaints. But I think our town is big enough, um, now where, um, this'll, this could serve our public very well. And you're right, it takes a long time. I think there was a, a property down on the east side off of sixteen that took, uh, I think six or seven. A long time and a lot of man-hours. Um, uh, but I think that, uh, this could be a start to, uh, the betterment for the community. And I think that'd be good.
Is this a swarm position?
No. We would, we would look for a civilian to fill that position. And I don't think our, our animal control would suffer. Based on what we're getting now, our following on social media, usually we post a dog and somebody's telling us, you know, it's John's down the street, that type of a thing. Um, so, a lot of them don't even, even make it to the current position, you know.
More questions?
This a designated, uh, position? It's not somebody that's gonna be pulled off to run the front desk, which they end up doing now?
That is correct. This would, the whole purpose of this is to make sure, and that's why we still need the CSO doing their, their, uh, duties. But it would be a refocus. They'd be able to do that stuff. There would be absolutely no front desk. And the CSO could serve as a, as a backup, you know, when the person's off or, or on vacation, that type of a thing. But the time, uh, that you're speaking of would be, um, they wouldn't be at the front desk.
More questions, Counsel Lewis? Other, Counsel Mokel?
Um, what, do you see any, um, obstacles in filling the position easily? Um, I know with sworn officers, we sometimes have a, an issue with how fast we can get them hired. Do you foresee any issues with this?
Because it's a new position, Counsel Mokel, the civil service commission would have to do two readings of a job description that we haven't developed yet. I don't see that as an obstacle. Uh, our civilian positions that we've gone out for in the last few years, those have been the best positions in terms of an applicant pool that we've had. It's the swarm positions that, that have the difficulty. So, we would recruit as best we can. I think there is, there would be an applicant pool out there though for this, uh, position.
More or less, uh, if we saw more documentation on this, what would you like to see? Job description?
I think he could just sum up everything he's told us, but the two officers, that's based on.
Well, it's based on several things, Counsel Lehman. Uh, you mentioned, you know, population and the officer-to-thousand ratio, which gets kicked around a lot. In the last ten years, we've added one sworn police officer and that was, uh, at the request of the school district. And the school district pays, pays for that officer. Uh, that specific officer's fully loaded cost to add an SRO into, uh, the high school. Cause they wanted two SROs. So you as a city council, uh, have not added a sworn law enforcement officer since, uh, two thousand seven. I know we had a couple in the oh-nine budget, but, uh, the way that that budget went, those were cut kind of towards the end. The population in two thousand seven was thirty-four thousand five hundred, so you had a, a one-point-three-six officer, uh, ratio. You know, right now, if we're at forty-one thousand, we're at a one-point-one-seven. I'm not real big on, on ratios, but the state average is one-point-two-two. So we're not overstaffed in, in that, uh, um, formula in comparison. What we use is the ICP formula that the police master services planning task force, uh, authorized or endorsed, I should say, years ago. And that is a formula based on workload, not population ratios. And I think that can be a lot more telling than, um, and different events are weighted based on how much investigation time goes into those. We've done that analysis every year. The last two years it shows that we're six sworn short. I don't have any, you know, we're not asking for, for six, we're asking for two. Um, and here's, here's a couple of reasons why we're looking at that October first start date. Number one, uh, it does lessen the financial impact in twenty eighteen. I'll talk a little bit about the twenty-nine in, impact in a, in a minute here. But it allows us to run that process as Darren kind of talked about in, in the summer. That's when we see our biggest applicant pool. It gives us time to recruit. We have to recruit now. We're, you know, we're struggling on our third process right now. Uh, we're doing backgrounds, our third process in one year to fill two vacancies. We've filled one, we're hopeful, confident in this one, we're gonna be able to fill the next one. But that took three processes. So, it allows us, we know what we've got on the horizon and, and an October first, uh, start date is reasonable, uh, based on history. It takes nine to eleven months from the time you advertise to the time somebody gets hired through the backgrounds. And you're through FTO and you're net, you're actually a net gain one on, on the street. Shock P continues to grow. In the next two and a half years, I don't think, you know, it's unreasonable to project about eleven hundred new housing units. So your population's gonna go up a couple more thousand. If you hired these two, which would bring us to fifty sworn officers and say the population is forty-three thousand, your staffing ratio is actually one-point-one-six. So it's a level with what we're at right now. Twenty nineteen, Counsel Lehman, you brought this up that, you know, those costs would be fully loaded in for twenty nineteen. We are anticipating, uh, several retirements in twenty nineteen from a captain, a sergeant and a senior patrol officer. So it's not going to be necessarily a sledgehammer, um, because when you're hiring and promoting, you're promoting to the next step, not at the top, and everybody's gonna retire at the top. By the time, just a quick conservative estimate, you know, from the time that those people start at the bottom step till they get to the top, that's a difference of about a hundred and thirty-three thousand dollars. So, there is, there is. So there is, there is some of that that we can anticipate in twenty-nineteen. Again, it's not the big sledgehammer that would happen if there were no retirements. What we're going to do with these two officers, I think, is important as well. Once these individuals are there, this is going to allow us to have a year-round street crimes unit. I know, I think a lot of you are familiar with that. They're plainclothes, they've dealt with a lot of things when active. They deal with our vandalisms, our thefts, drug addiction, and our frequent flyers. With the records management system we have now and the ability to pin map, and the county has a crime analyst, there's ways that these folks can really be productive in the field. That is what we want to designate them as. It would not require us to have a new squad car. We're pushing that limit a little bit, but they would be in a, either an unmarked car or a forfeit truck. So that would not, there would be no cost with that. And then, I guess, again, a quick, just a reminder about the current environment. You touched on it, Councilor Mokel, it's very, very difficult. Everybody's struggling. We actually have an applicant number, you know, around one hundred and sixteen that a lot of cities would kill to have in terms of applications. So we're still getting people. It's getting good quality candidates that can pass a background. There's also other cities, Savage is a perfect example right now, that has lost three or in the process of losing three senior officers. They're going to the private sector. And I would not be surprised if this police department lost an officer or two in the next year, two if the economy keeps doing well. We've got some people that I, I wouldn't be shocked if they said, you know, I don't want to be on YouTube, I don't want to, you know. That's just the, the reality of the environment that we're in right now.
Questions, Councilor, or Councilor Lehman?
I know a lot of times when we're working overtime, that a venue might pay for the officers for overtime. Would you see this as a positive impact on some of the overtime that's not covered?
Councilor Lehman, it could. Historically, they make a lot of arrests. The thought there is that they're getting to the problem and the root cause of the vandals or the drug house that's on a block. But they will, our arrests will go up, so maybe court time comes up, goes up a little bit. In terms of our, of our overall impact on overtime, we're about fifty-four percent of our overall overtime budget is contractual overtime. Well, at least that, I would say. And it'll probably be a little bit more next year with the Super Bowl overtime. There's one other thing I just wanted to touch on, calls for service, because crime is going down, but why do we need more cops? Our calls for service since twenty-twelve is up over fourteen percent. By the end of this year, we'll, we'll be three thousand calls for service, handling three thousand calls for service more now than we did in twenty-seventeen. So not all of it's crime, whether it's mental health, whether it's drug court checks, things like that, that, that keep us busy.
Councilor Lehman?
Yeah, I, I, you know, the nature of your business, overtime is really hard to predict. I mean, you could get some major call where it takes a lot of people to be called in or something, and you just can't predict that, so. The question I have is the, have you talked with the school about their long-term plans for SRO? Are they going to keep that going, being the situation that they're in? It might be low-hanging fruit financially or something. I don't, I don't know. I'm just trying to make sure you've had that conversation.
Councilor Lehman, that is a great question. That was one of the first ones out of my mouth. I think the second day, the new school superintendent was there. I was in his office for a number of obvious reasons. But we talked about the SRO program. He's very much committed to it. And they get a fair deal in terms of what, when you average out what they pay per officer for those four.
Yep.
We've spread that, you know, to see, you know, are we high, are we low? They're, we're dead average in terms of communities like us. So we're, they're committed to it, we're committed to it. They, certainly, the call load is, is, is their, the activity and stuff for the school resource officers. But they pay a little over two-hundred thousand dollars in twenty-seventeen here for the four school resource officers.
More?
No.
I just, I want to say that I think for public officials, I think public safety of a community should be right near the top. A safe and secure community is important. I didn't realize that we have an added, a net add in ten years of a sworn officer. Perception and reality, I think that we have a very low crime rate in our community. However, perception, go back to our community service, another thing, you know, that, you know, that perception is a little different than our actual crime rate. But I think policing is, is real important. And if we haven't had an add and we've grown proportionally, and we're starting to grow again after the economy bottomed out, to, to keep pace or even just net even, really, I think, if, you know, if some, we get some retirements, et cetera, I'd be in favor of this. Other questions? If not, thank you.
Thank you.
Michael, planning.
Welcome.
Evening, Mayor and Council. This is basically filling a job that's been vacant for just over a year. Alex Sharp had this job. And in the meantime, since he left, the planning staff's taken on the natural resource portion, portions of it that Jacob used to do. So they're actually doing the natural resource reviews in the field for tree preservation. And then on the planning side, they're actually reviewing the landscape plans now. If you remember, we had that one-point-six to one-eight million, one-point-eight million dollars in permit revenue starts with the planners. So we have a case manager system right now where the two senior planners that do current planning own a project from concept all the way to CEO, which takes a lot of time. There, gives a single point of contact for any builder, developer, so you only have to call one person. So they're getting interrupted on a daily basis by front counter calls, doing signed permits, zoning letters, which people are paying for. And they're always late and asking for them in ridiculous amounts of time. They also do all the decks and fence permits and single-family homes. So this would go back to that position that we had about a year ago. So they would pick up all, kind of the non-case management.
Questions with staff?
It would be a junior position as well.
Junior, yeah.
Was the, the new person that we hired, Eric, I think, in there?
Yes, sir.
Was that a, a new position, or was that a replacement?
So, Councilmember and Mayor, what we had is a planning manager position, which was a pretty high-grade position. We downgraded that position and hired Eric as a senior planner.
Long-term planner.
Long-range planner.
Okay, and this position is?
Just straight planner position, same position that Alex had.
Okay.
Councilor Mokel?
I heard two positions from last year that would, because we had Jacob leave, what was his salary at?
Without, without benefits, it was seventy-plus.
Okay, and then we had Alex. So this position is really replacing what we were paying for two?
Correct.
Is that my understanding, sort of?
Yes.
Yes, but understand that, especially in the planning department, we've changed the duties. We've changed the way planners work, so they're not apples to apples-
Well, we have some efficiencies, but I was just trying to go budget-wise, where we-
Councilor, that's correct. And we also, I picked up the ED coordinator's work, so- Look at efficiency. Some days, when our planners are out in the field or they're on vacation, I'm working the front counter and answering phone calls. So takes away, I'll come on my time for other things we could be doing.
Okay.
Other questions? Discussion? Thank you.
Thank you.
Up next, Jamie, a couple lifeguards for our brand-new pool, year-round indoor pool.
Yes, thank you, Mr.-
I think you did it in speechboard.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. You guys touched on a lot of it earlier in the discussion of the, the two lead lifeguard positions that we're bringing forward. But we're really struggling in Park and Rec Department in general for all of our part-time staff of just getting enough. We rely a lot on high school and college students. Summer, we have a lot of them that come back. We have a really good crew that we have from year to year during the school year. It's harder because we're not a college city, so we can't gravitate and pull from the local college to get those, those part-time staff in. We also here in Shock PR are up against a lot of other businesses looking for part-time work. And our wages are comparable, but they don't stand out compared to an Amazon or, you know, some of the other bigger businesses that are also looking for part-time staff here in town. So for lifeguarding specifically in the pool, it is a new facility. It's something that has a certification to it. It's a position that a lot of people will come into if it's a full-time position. Out of college is a stepping stone into the Parks and Recreation field. But we are looking to do a full-time so that we can give them different responsibilities of, you know, majority will be guarding during those daytime hours when we can't get those high school and college students in. But we have a lot of pool cleaning too. The aquatic staff always does all the cleaning in our pools, both indoor and outdoor. That's typical of the industry. We're required to test the water every morning and throughout the day, so this would be a responsibility of this position as well. They would be required also to teach lessons. They'd have the WSI certification as well as the lifeguarding certification. We'd also get these people trained to train other lifeguards. Right now, the only staff that can train lifeguards within the city is myself and Sarah Foley, our aquatics recreation supervisor. So in order to get another people, another person in to train lifeguards, we can recruit more, offer more classes. Because Sarah and I do that, you know, outside of work on different hours to get staff certified, so we can hire them. And then this person would manage swimming lessons as well. We had put in our plan to have an aquatics coordinator, that would be a thirty-hour week position that would manage swimming lessons. However, swimming lessons, majority are nights and weekends. The aquatics coordinator only being able to work thirty hours doesn't help with that daytime shift. Having a full-time, two full-time lead lifeguards, we would split their shifts, so they would be able to work during the day and into the evening, at least to get our swimming lessons off, so they would cover that role. We would then not fill the aquatics coordinator position, which would save us about twenty-four thousand in our part-time budget. So it'd be shifted to a full-time budget. If we don't have any daytime staff available to work, our recreation supervisor, that would pay a pretty good salary for, will be sitting on the pool deck, operating it if we want to have the pool open. And also, like I said, this position, if it's full-time, can attract those new college graduates looking to get into our field rather than a part-time position. And the YMCA has contacted us also, looking to share staff with us. So it's a metro-wide issue that we're dealing with of not having enough part-time lifeguards as well as part-time staffing in general.
Questions?
Who's lifeguarding our pool now?
Right now, we do still have high school students available for the next week until they go back to school. So we've been able to fill a lot of shifts with that.
We have the crunch to fill it after that until we fill a position.
We will, yep. We have a couple of recent college graduates that are looking for work that we're able to use now. But once they get a full-time position, we'll be looking.
So you said these two full-time would be able to train staff? Would they also be able to train a high school or college person for, for the, for the summer job at San Venture next year?
Correct, yep. We'd have them go through the Red Cross course to be able to train lifeguards.
Or they could just train somebody because somebody wants to learn.
Right, right, yeah.
Yeah, we offer classes that then necessarily don't work for us, but-
It, it may be a, be able to train some of the Valley Fair employees for a revenue stream, I don't know, just a thought. Mr. Mayor, if I can continue, you know, I have really, like I mentioned, little questions about the lifeguard positions. But I do want to talk about the other hundred and thirty-three thousand that you wanted in the budget for additional park and recreation, recreation, yeah, recreation. Is that part of this lifeguard duties, or is this, what is this?
That was basically based on the rest of the staffing of the pool. So we based that on, when we have the pool fully staffed and fully operational, we need six lifeguards up at a time. So we did budget for six months of the new pool for twenty-seventeen. That is really budgeting then for a full year in twenty-eighteen for our part-time staff.
Did you say six lifeguards at a time?
We have to have six lifeguards up at a time in our indoor pool. We have to have ten up at a time at our outdoor pool.
Really? Whose requirements are made?
It's the state requirements by zoning of the pool. The pool has zones that we have to put in when we did our pool permit, so that the entire water is covered by a button.
Let me make a note to pester the state on that one. Ridiculous.
Till some kid dies.
Further questions, comments?
That's still way too many.
If not, thank you.
Thank you.
All right. So no formal action, and we'll see more details coming forward.
Yes, sir. We'll get the requested information to you within the next week, week and a half. And we can discuss those more like a one, if you wish, when you do the content, proposed level as the max. That's all we have on this particular topic.
Excellent, all right.
Short recess.
Councilor Lehman?
Second.
Make a motion, second by Councilor Mokel. No discussion, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
We'll stand and recess for eight minutes. We'll stand and recess for eight minutes. Let's reconvene the City of Shakopee City Council Workshop for August twenty-ninth, two thousand seventeen. And we are on five B comprehensive plan amendment for the entertainment land use. Michael will present.
Mayor and Counsel, good evening. This land use is not defined in the twenty-thirty comprehensive plan. So the council, as part of the EAW review for Canterbury, noticed that and asked that you all adopt an amendment to the twenty-thirty comprehensive plan and also be inserted in the twenty-forty comprehensive plan for future land use calculations. So it came up when current planning staff and Eric Weiss were looking at the tra- transportation numbers of the council. This area, basically Canterbury, had hardly any traffic. And so the county, who is paying the consultant with us to do the transportation model, raised a flag and discussed with the council, and the council said, "Well, that area was never really well-defined in the comprehensive plan," so we didn't really assign any values to it. So we've been working with John Charlo, who's FAICP, so we've been happy to work with him. And some discussions, basically, we're talking about, and the council pointed out, in this kind of orange, very large shaded area, and this is Valley Fair up at the top of the page, this just isn't defined in. And one of the issues we came up with is you have large employers like Seagate sitting here, which has eight hundred employees. That traffic volume was never really calculated into this area. You also have a hotel, McDonald's, and other uses that really were not looked at because this is considered the entertainment use of Canterbury. So what we've done is, this is just a draft comprehensive plan amendment that was drafted by Mr. Charlo, who's here tonight. We can talk specifically about it, but we believe meets the intent of the comprehensive plan, will resolve the transportation, the TAS issues we're having with the county, and also really better defines what occurs in this area. So the major part is that land uses would include restaurants, hospitality, entertainment, medium and high-density residential limited to twenty percent of the designated land, but the maximum density of thirty dwelling units per acre, office, office tech, medical, retail, and commercial recreational uses. And the entertainment component will continue to be the dominant use in these areas. If you look back at this map, so this is basically the Canterbury land use today, and even as the site redevelops, this will get reconfigured, but the track and all of that and the car room will remain there, and the horse barns will hopefully get reconfigured, but still take a large portion of the land. So the amendment processes, there would be a public hearing at the Planning Commission October fifth, and we'll be back to council for action on October seventeen. Civic ques- specific questions, and Charlo's here, he can also...
So this would affect the, um, major recreational zone? And in your memo, it talked about Canterbury and Valley Fair.
Those are the two areas in the comprehensive plan.
Okay.
And that, that's actually our zoning, so from a land use standpoint, we would have a new, well-defined entertainment land use designation.
So when we went years ago, when Canterbury started, it was the racetrack district, and the impact was only the horse track. And, uh, and now this is evolving. We changed it to the major recreational, and then this would be an amendment to that to include other uses.
Correct, Mayor. I think one of the issues, you can see just from this large area that's outlined here, there's a lot of other items that are wrapped into that comprehensive plan designation. So our plan is to continue the dominant use to be kind of the entertainment use, because it goes beyond major recreational. It's a racetrack, it's a car room, they do concerts and special events, there are car shows. It's a pretty broad spectrum of uses, and it's, over time, things have changed. And so what we're trying to do is better define both from a transportation standpoint and a land use standpoint, what can occur in this area and kind of what the dominant land use will be. So again, you can see the Canterbury portion takes up still pretty significant, but we're looking for uses that would complement that. So Canterbury's talked about redeveloping the horse barn area as some sort of retail and entertainment village that would have restaurants that are currently not in the market. They've talked about doing housing development over here, potentially some other corporate headquarters that they've talked to. So again, that entertainment would be the dominant use, but it would be other uses similar to what you see around there today.
Significant changes in the last twenty-five-plus years to this area in uses. Other comments, questions for staff? Counselor Whiting?
I'm just re- going through these, uh, other titles you left in there. Uh, we have a generation plant over there. DG, is that something that needs to be spelled out in this? Or would that go under office tech or something?
That's something we'll probably need to add in. That was also brought up by the council that we have a cogeneration facility basically there that should be added to the list of uses.
Okay.
And this was, uh, brought to light major by, by the EAW, correct?
The EAW, and then Eric's been working with the county and the council at twenty-forty plan, and they actually, if you go back to this map, so in the twenty-forty comprehensive plan, their consultants developed transportation zones and traffic that will be generated by all of them. When they looked at the zone, we all kind of shook our heads and said, "There's a problem," because I think they were showing minimal traffic, and we already know with Seagate there, that's eight hundred employees.
Additional traffic that was never factored in.
Correct.
Right.
So that's when the council said, "Look, we just looked at the EAW. We, we really need to look at this comprehensively and adjust not only the traffic, but adjust sewer water needs, long-term infrastructure, so that we can really meet the demands of what's going to redevelop here over time."
You're adding a re- uh, um, uh, den- a high-density aspect to this that was not previously included in the land use verbiage before?
Mayor, that's correct, so...
My question that I'm going to get at is, Valley Fair has a housing component, and I know it is seasonal. Are they operating in non-conforming or are they conditional use?
So Mayor Cur- Council Mayor, the, both Valley Fair and Canterbury have housing components today, so one of the minor red flags that was raised by the council was they have a RV park at Canterbury, which is considered housing by them. And they also have housing above the barns.
Above the barns, okay.
So there already is a housing component occurring there. Valley Fair also has a pretty significant housing component when they're open. And I don't think any of us can predict over, for the twenty-forty plan, what's going to happen next to that housing site they currently have. It's just basically a field they don't have a parking. So we'll be working with them on kind of what that corporation's long-term vision is for the rest of that property.
Okay. Questions, discussion of staff? Counselor Lehman?
Well, at our workshops that we had on this topic, we specifically, actually, we were five oh consensus, unanimous consensus of council.
Circle discussion?
Uh, that we never got back to, that one. Where we talked about five or ten-acre black squares on a map, site-specific, because we talked specifically about not having too much in one location. What this in fact does is the opposite. It allows it to go pretty much anywhere on the site, um, up to twenty percent of the whole site. So it's counter to what our position was at that time, unless that's changed. If it's changed, that's fine, but I guess I'd be the first question. So I'm not going to support, just a blanket. Then the second question I have is, what's currently allowed in a major recreation minus the recent text amendment?
Pretty much just entertainment.
So now I need a copy of the latest text amendment.
The one that was made for Canterbury for their housing?
Yes.
Yeah, that was a zoning text amendment, uh, for that PUD. So that PUD right now has about thirty things that are allowed in it, everything from new car storage to RVs, horse barn, anything kind of related to the racetrack.
So their current PUD allows them to have hotels and restaurants, correct?
Correct.
Okay.
So, so there's zoning and there's land use, so unfortunately here, in the comprehensive plan, they've been urged over the years. What we need to do is, kind of broad land use is, um, things that occur on a property that are not basically controlled by the zoning, because it's a different layer.
I, I understand that completely. I'm just amazed that s- staff and our consultant WSB and a developer all looked at an EA- EAW document that said, "Comp plan amendment's not required." All of us should have known it would be required. Um, so that kind of floored me, that's kind of concerning. So I'm glad that we're stepping back and splitting the two. But this, this approach basically, to me, is kind of like washing dishes. You throw everything in the sink and, and see what comes out of it. It's not really planning on what you want to see there. It's just saying, "Let's throw it all in there and see what happens." Because the list is pretty much everything.
Well, I think one of the issues is, I think Canterbury, since I've been here, has had three or four plans, and since city administrator's been here, I think there's probably been ten plans. I mean, I think the market, um, really dictates where to go there. I think that, being a free market, I think the consultants tried to write something that keeps the major recreation component of the racetrack and the car room as a significant piece and uses that are affiliated with that, and still acknowledges that you've got a major corporate headquarters currently there today, you've got hotels and restaurants there today, and I think you may see other corporate-type uses go around the track.
And a, and a DG now, in the, uh, in the power plant. So I think that back, you know, Matt, you're correct, back in, um, February, March, we did a workshop and we put circles on maps where high density would be, I guess, at the consensus of council. Um, this area was one of them. Um, then we tried to get down to, we didn't have specific lots identified. We tried to go through an exercise where what would high density look like on, had little squares and what could be built, and we identified five different areas in our community. Um, this was one of them. Now, in the draft proposal of the amendment, it talks about twenty percent of the land being for housing, and I think that it, is there a proposal in front of us? Um, no. So in our industrial land, if I manufacture a widget in our industrial zoning right now, and I want to have a retail window to sell my window, widget out of my factory, I believe that's a permitted use or a conditional use, as long as it doesn't exceed ten or fifteen percent of my manufacturing space. I can sell out of ten or fifteen. Kind of a combination of, uh, unique zoning, because I should be industrial, bigger roads, trucks, manufacturing, but now I'm going to go retail where an average, uh, consumer could come up with their passenger car and buy my, buy my widget. You're kind of blending those two. I think this, at twenty percent, can it go where the track is right now? No. Can it go where the horse barns are right now? No.
Why not?
Uh, what are, the track is the track. I mean, the track is the main driver there.
This color indicates the area that it, any twenty percent within that area.
Twenty percent in that area.
Okay. Now, in that, within that area is a PUD from the Minnesota Racing Commission.
Yeah.
That area should be outlined and subtracted, right? It's on a separate PUD. Uh, then you take the remaining space and then you figure out, gee, would we want to put the residential right here behind that industrial use? Probably not.
Right.
Right?
Yeah.
How about over here along the other residential uses? That might be a lo- good location. Are we going to do this process or, or not?
We don't, you, we're looking at the land use aspect and without a, without a specific proposal in front of us. But maybe, Mr. Charlo, welcome?
Thank you.
Good to see you here.
Mayor and council members, I'll be very brief. Uh, just to clarify, that we are in the process of amending the, the planning and development, so we will be coming...
So, we will be coming back with a planned unit development that will designate which portions of the property would be eligible for the twenty percent. Assuming that the Dorn project goes forward, that would be counted toward the twenty percent. So, just very quickly to clarify what's in front of you. The expectation is that this is to be the language that would be inserted into the land use chapter of the comprehensive plan where it describes the, this entertainment land use designation. So, the first paragraph just says that it applies to Valley Fair and to Canterbury Park. The second paragraph basically said what you said, Mayor, that these are uses that are mature and they've evolved over time. They've changed over time and we want to establish in the comprehensive plan that we expect them to continue to change. And we identified the fact that both of them have accessory uses and ancillary uses, which we don't really think the Metropolitan Council needs to concern themselves with. It's just things that are going to be part of these operations going forward. And then the third thing tried to identify what are those uses that would be complementary to the entertainment district and compatible with the entertainment district. All the time recognizing that it's still going to be subject to a planned unit development, which is a discretionary approval that the city council would approve. So, the issue of blank check, if you will, in terms of being able to put residential anywhere, isn't really on the table.
Well, and specific to Counselor Lehman's discussion about all of the orange, the twenty percent could go anywhere in the housing component.
The twenty percent couldn't go anywhere unless it was authorized by the planned unit development.
That's not how I'm seeing it, so...
And like you mentioned, we've already seen the Dorn proposal. I mean, it's not by any means final or approved, but now would, would the RV portion be included in the twenty percent? In the barn residential portion, or is that just the high-density portion?
I'm not familiar with the Valley Fair footprint.
Well, there's an RV component in the...
At Canterbury.
At Canterbury.
That would be defined as part of the planned unit development as well.
Counselor Lehman?
What?
You have more questions or comment? I guess I look at this, I have followed the racetrack from almost day one. Matter of fact, it was really funny because they were talking about the impact and they had all this land around it for accessory uses. Tac shops, horses, saddle shops, all those uses and this big hunk of land with the track in the middle. Matter of fact, the city of Shakopee actually, in the very early days, got fifty cents a car for the parking, in the very early days. But those uses never materialized. Yet this big land all the way around it and trying to now, twenty-five, thirty years later, trying to figure out how to bring the best and highest use of that land out, that at one time was planned for, hey, horsing, horse, horses. It never happened. Things do change, significant changes. Yes, the racetrack itself kind of consolidated, horses raced and they went bankrupt, there was repurchase, then a card club. Now you look at it, you know, the Seagate's part of this, now we have an energy plant. They have sold some of their land to try to bring that down. But I say over twenty-five years, there's been significant changes that would warrant an opportunity to refresh the land use of which we're doing. And for the benefit of the highest and best land use availability of scrub land that I see today in their, you know, in their parking lot, in their peripheral area.
Mayor, I was involved in that original planned unit development.
Absolutely.
And I would reinforce the fact that the vision that folks had for that facility and the impact that horse racing was going to have on this area was a pretty bold vision. And it really hasn't materialized.
Right.
And so, what we're looking at now is making that portion of the property more compact. Trying to put around it other kinds of compatible entertainment uses, as well as other uses that would build the tax base, the tax capacity, if you will.
Tax capacity. And I, I don't think thirty years ago, you were thinking the auxiliary businesses in a different light. You wouldn't say this facility would need high-density around it or would be a good compatible use.
That's right.
But I argue that in thirty years, things have changed. And actually, the perception of how we view things has changed as well. And I always thought the RT, Racetrack District, RTD in their original form, was actually too restrictive because it was limited to the auxiliary uses only in one industry. So, it was all tied to one horse, right? And that horse struggled. And then they, they rezone or relabeled it, major entertainment district, which allowed some loosening. Did that really materialize as much? Not as much? But this, this I feel over thirty years is the next step.
We'll be coming back to you in the very near future with our concept plans for the revisions to the PUD. And I'm quite confident in telling you that we're not going to be pushing the envelope on the twenty percent of residential.
I'm sorry, Counselor Whiting?
My point was, you know, we do, we do see the potential plans. And this is, within this recreation district, we also know that Valley Fair is basically, has the residential component to it that isn't listed in this comprehensive plan. So, I think, you know, an amendment is clearly needed for what we've already put in there and for what is proposed that, you know, it's not done deal yet, but it's proposed, so I see it as an easy fit.
Just, just one final comment, and that is we're talking about the 2040 comprehensive plan update. And so, one of the things that we tried to do in that third paragraph is build some flexibility in, because none of us knows exactly what the market is going to be like in that time.
And be forward-thinking. And actually, that's one of the reasons I bring up the past, is because I believe thirty years ago, some of the best planners in our community, in our state, were involved in that art racetrack district, planning for the future with the best ideas. And unfortunately, those didn't come to fruition. Now it's later, but we're also planning for later. So, we're looking back at what didn't work and trying to look forward to the future and design it and zone it right for what will work, 2040.
So, your twenty percent is of what number?
Of the entertainment district.
Okay, the district is how large?
About a hundred acres.
So, it's the whole thing that's shown on this map?
Yes.
All right, that's all I needed to know.
Thank you.
Counselor Lewis?
I'd like a definition from the city on what they call entertainment.
Oh, an amendment?
What they call entertainment. Just so I know, you know, it says entertainment will be continued to be the dominant use within these areas. Well, Matt considers shooting sport entertainment. You consider something different. I consider auto racing entertainment. I mean, I'd like to know what the city claims is entertainment.
Blacktop Canterbury, bring NASCAR out? Bank it?
We can definitely look at the zoning ordinance definitions for entertainment and make sure...
Tighten it up? Identify it?
He just answered my question where twenty percent of the total site could be high-density residential and that's inconsistent with what our unanimous consensus was at our workshop.
But we had, we sat at a workshop and put a circle around it. It wasn't site-specific.
We, we, we said we were coming back with five an acre and ten acre square, black squares to put down on a map to see all that. We never did that.
Oh, yeah, we did.
No, no.
We had squares of density in downtown Horton. I believe we did it over here. We moved those squares around. They were all different shapes and sizes. What would a density of thirty look on a ten-acre site?
And we also said we didn't want to have a whole bunch in one location.
Yep, and this is actually part of it. When we talk about high-density and from that workshop, I thought we did build good consensus and we do, we identified, I think, five areas that were spread out. One was out by South Bridge.
Is that map coming up here?
No, it's the next item.
But discussions...
But we looked at Canterbury. We looked at downtown. We looked at the mall. We looked at Horton.
Well, I don't think we, any of us envisioned nine, seven, hundred in that location. Or was I missing it?
Nine or ten what?
Nine or seven hundred units at one location.
Are you talking a number of units or density?
We didn't have a plan in front of us.
Density. Do you want to talk units or density?
Units.
So, let's try to put it in perspective. The Sands Project, which was one of the first ones to get worked on, I think is twenty-five units an acre. You want to know how many units? I look at density. So, that, those units are three hundred and ten, I think.
Well, get the calculator out, but twenty percent of three hundred and thirty acres equals how many acres? And then put your density on top of it, see what you come up with.
There's absolutely nothing cast in concrete about these percentages. It was, this is a land use designation in the comprehensive plan and we can certainly, we can certainly come back and tighten that number up.
If you're asking for a comprehensive plan amendment that you have written here, that shows it here.
You want it site-specific.
That would do exactly what I just said.
Which, which sets a maximum, but you still have the opportunity to set... You can still restrict this through the planned unit development. And we can, we can change this number too. This was draft language for discussion.
No, I know, this is more of a land use aspect, but then I think Counselor Lehman wants it really site-specific. And what, I, I, then it's every proposal stand on the ground, then it's actually like, to me, spot zoning. And we've had in that discussion in our community for twenty years.
Well, what's proposed is spot zoning on steroids. You're dumping it all into the sink, all the dishes are mixed, and you don't really know what's going to come out of it.
This is the comp plan.
We're saying in this zone, major entertainment, in this zone, you can have high-density. We kind of built consensus that this would be a good area for identity. Now we want to modify, amend the land use designation and up to twenty percent. So, it can't be all over the entire, all over the entire designated land use, which has already been identified, right? The district has been identified. It can't exceed twenty percent.
And twenty percent of three hundred and thirty acres is what? Sixty-six acres at thirty units per acre.
But if you're already including your RV park and your horse barns, you're taking up part of that already. I mean, if you start looking at what the horse barns take up.
It's two thousand.
Yep. Okay.
All right.
Here, we'll come back with some refined language.
All right. Mr. Schardlow, thank you very much for your expertise and your input on this matter. So, then council wishes to have this tightened up and brought back? Is that correct?
I believe so.
We can do it.
All right. Is that acceptable to all parties?
I think, I think it was broad enough for me. I, I don't see it needing any tightening, to me. There's no way you're going to put that much density on that specific area.
What would you like to see happen?
Well, I think it's, it's good. We got to add a few things that we talked about with the DG plant and things, but this draft comprehensive plan amendment as is here, I think, is, is with the things I just mentioned, is acceptable.
Mayor and council work with the consultant to tighten up the line.
Okay. Let's do that. All right, we will see it back here and we'll try to tighten up. And if you have further comments, input, contact staff. Contact Mr. Reynolds. Enough on this? Moving ahead then to 5C, High Density Housing Overview, which will...
So, as you've mentioned, Mayor and the council, you had a discussion in 2015, in 2016. The Sand Company brought forward a concept for an R4 zone for, also on the South Bridge. The R4 was awarded by council. These are some of the items that we went over in the past, but here's current densities. So, Addison's eighteen dwelling units an acre, the Gardening Apartments, eighteen dwelling units an acre. Northridge Court is forty-six. Levy Drive Apartments are eighty-six. The Hendersons, forty-one. And the All Saints Senior Housing is twenty-six. So, those are projects currently in the ground and built and up in the... So, the current 2030 comprehensive plan shows high-density at an R3 density of twelve dwelling units an acre or fourteen dwelling units an acre in the PUD. Two projects currently under construction are at twenty-four dwelling units an acre. That's the South Bridge, the Sand Company project, Mayor, that we spoke about, and the Hy-Vee project, which is eighteen dwelling, three dwelling units an acre. Need to amend the comp plan to change, allow densities. Pointed out to me by the council, you should not be referencing actual zoning in the comprehensive plan because it's strictly land used. So, I was here in 2008, but we definitely not make that error in the 2040 comprehensive plan. So, there's a lot of news, you can read these, but this is just to show you, Twin Cities apartment market stays hot driving up Brent. You'll notice the items, rent, annual rent rate gains vary to one percent in Roosevelt to seventeen point eight percent in Shakopee, largely depending on how many buildings have been built. So, there's not been a new entire project in the ground here since 2005. Addison had one building that was added, but clearly we're seeing some tightness and constraints in the market at seventeen point eight percent. The most recent study that was done, market usability studies showed they were at, for new construction, market rate ran a dollar seventy a square foot. So, here's another article that appeared the same week. Demand for apartments outpaces supply in the Twin Cities. There's a dynamic shift going on right now. You can see the rents in here are a thousand seventy-eight to one thousand one hundred dollars year over year. Rent increases were greater in downtown Minneapolis and downtown St. Paul. They're getting close to two dollars, two fifty a square foot for apartments. So, we're kind of revisiting some of the things we've seen before, but these are up-to-date numbers. This is Apple Valley. There you can go as high as a hundred dwelling units an acre in a PUD. These are current projects that they have either under construction or just getting finished. So, one's at thirty-seven point five. Phase two of their projects at forty-five point four-two. There's another project at thirty-eight point six-seven. So, these are new projects, either under construction or open. Hopkins, the Moline, which that little rendering is of, is at ninety-eight dwelling units an acre. Roseville allows twenty-four to thirty-six per high-density and can be increased through the CUP process. Burnsville in their kind of downtown, their center-city zone allows twenty-one point seven-eight to fifty-six point ninety-two dwelling units an acre. And they actually deduct out all of the public right-of-way easements, dedicated wetland, stormwater parks and open spaces in their calculation. Adina, their high-density is considered seventy-five dwelling units an acre and you can get over a hundred dwelling units an acre in a PUD. St. Louis Park is at seventy dwelling units an acre in a PUD. And that cap can be removed by council action. Their last project, which just approved, is at a hundred and eleven dwelling units an acre. Brooklyn Park, twenty-four dwelling units an acre and you can go higher with the PUD. And Bloomington is actually no limit. They typically are at sixty dwelling units an acre and higher in mixed use where there's residential. So, the three projects that are under construction are at ninety-five, fifty-nine and seventy-three. So, just looking back through notes that staff had from the last two years of presentations, one of the things that was kind of misleading was we had these businesses and the total property taxes paid. So, what we did is went back and looked at what the city portion was. You'll see in commercial, it magically is around thirteen point nine seven or nine eight almost for every project. But apartment-wise, you'll see that it matches pretty closely to single-family homes. So, the Addisons at twenty-seven point eight-six, the proposed property taxes for the Sand Company is at twenty-seven and a single-family home is, the average single-family home is at twenty-seven point one eight. So, the big difference here is that that residential is paying for a lot of city services. Commercial, a large portion goes to the state and a large portion goes to fiscal disparities.
Two of those are, two of the highest numbers there are apartments. Two of those are, two of the highest numbers there are apartments, and, and have the city portion by two or three times compared to the other uses.
The second highest is single-family.
Yeah, that's your average. We took a twenty-five hundred square foot house, um, on a quarter acre lot. That's actually what the taxes were, two thousand eight hundred eighty-eight dollars, and the city portion was seven hundred eighty-five dollars. I think what we're looking at, and I didn't do a whole fee calculation, but the Hy-Vee apartment, the fee was over a million dollars for park dedication, um, spuck, water, um, Met Council, and a bunch of other fees that go in. So what happens is, for an eight hundred square foot apartment, they're basically paying proportionally what a single-family home pays. Just about twelve thousand five hundred dollars in fees, which is what a single-family home pays. And a single-family doesn't differentiate. It can be a fifteen hundred square foot house, or a ten thousand square foot house. They still pay that same fee. Apartments, which are getting smaller because of construction costs and rent costs, are paying a pretty significant, um, amount of fees for the city and also in, uh, property tax rates.
That's providing they don't have a twenty-five-year TIF, correct?
Correct. But I will say, just some rough calculations I did on the back of a napkin today.
Oh geez, that's how the Vikings almost came here.
So a, um, a fifty-unit subdivision on thirteen acres, which is what the sand company project is on, it would be, uh, fifty units based on the current zoning. Um, the sand company, they're doing three hundred and thirteen units. So you'd have a hundred and thirty-nine people using the national average for the fifty units. You'd have four hundred and sixty-nine people in the sand company project. On a purely per capita tax basis, the single-family pays two hundred and eighty dol- two hundred and eighty-two dollars, and apartments paying four hundred and sixty dollars in city property taxes. So it's a pretty big thing. And I think, from a city services, apartment complex, market rate, they're all sprinkled now. You don't see that in a single-family home. They don't require neighborhood snow plowing, um, they're not doing street repairs, 'cause it's on the developer. The length of sewer and storm sewer, private developer in apartments paying for all of that on their site. There's no neighborhood. So I think the impact is pretty significant from a property tax standpoint.
Providing they don't have a twenty-five-year TIF.
Who has a twenty-five-year TIF?
Well, what's, why, why are we bringing that up?
Well, if you have a property that's developing, whether it's a single company or a major development, if they have a tax abatement and the tax-made dollars are moved back into the infrastructure for the company, then they're not technically paying for them improvements.
Councilman Lehman, I, um, I would ask politely that you not use the word "abatement" and "TIF" together, because they are completely different.
True.
Ab- abatement.
Yeah.
Money flows to the developer. Is that correct?
Depends on the abatement. Is it eighty-twenty? Is it a hundred percent?
I have some money flows to the developer.
It could. It could go back to the developer.
In a, in a TIF, Tax Increment Financing District, the developer gets zero dollars. The captured amount goes for a public improvement.
That the, that development needs.
That are, uh, in, uh, that is a public improvement.
That that development needs.
Okay. We- Amazon was a TIF.
The but-for test works both ways. But for them improvements not being made, that development would not happen.
You could say TIF is gonna cause a big impact, and therefore, Shenandoah and Fourth Avenue and 101 have to be rebuilt. The TIF does not go to Amazon. It's gonna go to the betterment of those roads, which improves our community.
Then next time we redo a road in middle of a residential neighborhood, let's put that money back toward them residential properties.
It's going to the impact of the roads.
Yeah. Let's do, let's do tax abatement on residential houses in Shakopee. Or let's do a TIF district in Old Shakopee and say, any improvements anybody makes on their properties, we'll put back toward your property, your project.
Well, you, earlier you used TIF as, in this example, and then in your last sentence you used abatement. Um, I don't, I don't think they go hand-in-hand. I think they're designed to do two different things.
Okay. Why don't you explain to us what, what exactly their, the two different things are that they're designed to do, and how one is typically used on commercial industrial projects, and one is typically used on residential projects?
We're not talking about.
Yeah.
No, exactly.
You brought it up.
Well, I did.
You brought it up.
You started it, and I wanted some clarification.
And you expanded on it, so. So why don't you expand on it and explain why.
Let's skip back on this topic.
Zoning classification.
So, this is the current zoning map, and it shows the two currently approved R four projects. So this is the sand company project right here, and this is the Hy-Vee project right here. Those will be the darker brown on that map. These are the circles that council talked about last time around. So, that's Canterbury. It was never defined the acreage. This is the, um, gravel pit, 'cause they're talking about doing mixed use there. This is the Howar piece. You know, this is a small little circle. This is Beta C, which was talked, but again, we're planning for twenty forty. Beta C goes out of business or whatever, we're gonna have to assign land use other than green fields there. Then, there is the city-owned property that was designated as part of the West End Study. There's the piece that was in, uh, D.R. Horton. And then there was a discussion in downtown, whether it was along the riverfront or along the train tracks. That was that discussion. So it is spread out, Mayor and Council, uh, based on this map. I think one of the things that was, we're planning, way before any of us, I think, was putting it all in one area here, where you end up, um, with a high-density project with seven or eight or nine or ten different owners in here. You'll see, I think, we share with you some articles over time, that the biggest problem with high-density housing is management. And if you have a good management company, most of these projects that I showed you are, are being, are either in long-term hold portfolios of the developers, so fifteen to twenty years, or they're gonna be sold to a real estate investment trust, who's highly motivated to keep the project in good shape, 'cause they have a fifteen-year federal requirement. Or they're being sold to MetLife or a big insurance company. My experience with them is they protect their assets significantly. The problem we've had in Shakopee is that there are mom-and-pop home, uh, developer thing here. They don't have the resources or the depth to manage these projects. So who are people interested, in, interested in new market rate housing in Shakopee? So there's millennials, that's who's driving a lot of the downtown Minneapolis projects, but we have those people here in Shakopee today. They're working in Entrust Data Card, they're at Seagate, they're at Emerson. Your people that can't afford the two-dollar-and-sixty cent a square foot in Minneapolis, since we're at a dollar-seventy. So one of the unique things we're having is someone works in Shakopee, Shakopee, and a spouse or partner could be working in Minneapolis, 'cause we do have a bus going there. So they're saving significantly by living in Shakopee. How much is a new eight hundred square foot apartment in Shakopee? It's thirteen hundred and sixty dollars a month. We're, we're not talking, um, inexpensive housing. There are people without that twenty percent down, because that thirteen hundred and sixty dollars a month, in today's market, you could afford a two-hundred-and-eighty-four thousand dollar house. But because of largely student debt or other things that have happened, like getting a divorce, people don't necessarily have that twenty percent down right now. Or they're very unsure of the current housing market. We're at a peak. The most interesting article that was in the two apartment articles was that single-family homes actually dropped five percent last month in sales. So I think we're seeing, uh, a ceiling on price sensitivity in the single-family home market. But because apartments, you're only making a one-year or two-year commitment, it allows you some mobility. So, we're seeing older people who are downsizing, um, again, people seeking that mobility, and people who like to rent, because there's no maintenance, gives you that mobility, and there's lots of money. And so there's a whole new generation of apartment people that like the apartment lifestyle. So downtown, the B-three zone, um, allows, as part of a mixed-use project, it's regulated, um, not by the, um, R-three or R-four zoning, it's actually regulated by floor area ratio. So you can have four times the volume as your lot. In other areas, not B-three in downtown, you'd have to rezone either to R-four, or you'd have to do a PUD. So Ma, the other issue we have here in Shakopee is currently we're at two-point-two-five spaces per unit. We're one of the highest in the Twin Cities. The national model is one space per bedroom. Uh, we would recommend, as we're going forward in discussions, that one-bedrooms and studios be at one-point-two-five per unit. It would reduce our stormwater runoff that allows for additional landscaping and open space, and it's just a more efficient use of land. We're seeing then our shopping centers right now. I think you all will see some redevelopment of shopping centers like Garden Coles. Those parking lots are not full, even on Black Friday or during the holidays.
They're redeveloping their parking lots, 'cause their parking lots are too big.
Southdale Mall is the best example. They're redeveloping all four corners of that mall with high-density housing, because they don't need that parking anymore. So, um, talk about Shakopee. Most cities have a preliminary cap, so we would propose a cap at thirty dwelling units an acre. Uh, we've been meeting, there's, um, a lot of studies going on for a lot of different reasons in Shakopee for senior housing, market-rate senior housing, not subsidized. And regionally, those are at forty to sixty dwelling units an acre, because they are very small apartments with, um, dining rooms and amenities, and they, most of them have a component of assisted living, so it's a continuum of care. So for instance, um, you would live in the apartment until, um, you couldn't anymore, you would go into assisted living. If you couldn't live in the assisted living, you would go to a place like Saint Gertrudes. It's very interesting, meeting with some of the developers, um, they're all pretty large nonprofits. They're seeing the average age of people moving to senior housing today is eighty-two years old, which is unheard of in the country's history. And so they really need, 'cause after they get close to ninety, they end up in assisted living. And then, as they get over their nineties, they end up at Saint Gertrudes, or another type of facility. But there is a huge demand right now in Shakopee and in this area for that. There are people that don't, can't afford services to keep their house going. They can afford three or four thousand dollars a month. They'll live in a facility that provides them with all their food and services. We'd also propose that you allow for higher densities in PUDs, and this would be a big change for Shakopee, 'cause we're gonna propose switching from our current PUDs, which are overlay zones, to an actual zoning district. We are one of the few cities left in the Twin Cities that's just doing PUDs by an overlay, um, but not actually by an enforceable zoning district. And so that would make a PUD performance-based, higher-designed, and it's addition many. That's what most of the cities in the Twin Cities are doing. So here's the current comp plan, and yes, indeed, high-density residential is eight to twelve units per acre. Here is where we actually have the zoning and the land use, which we would remove. And so we're gonna propose a, something called a higher-density residential project. You could have up to thirty dwelling units an acre for a multi-story, multifamily housing, excluding townhouses, 'cause those are currently are allowed in, um, the R-three zone. Higher densities would be allowed by PUD, by performance measures, and housing standards, maybe up to forty dwelling units an acre, up to sixty dwelling units an acre by PUD. And we would put a caveat that those would need to be near services like medical, grocery, and entertainment. So again, um, we would have a public planning commission, and we'll come back to you for final adoption. So the big change would be adding a new, we would leave the R-three alone, that whole, it would be high-density. We would have another category called higher-density. And we would propose, do you find this map to show where those higher densities could go? So it wouldn't just be these circles.
We're not gonna call it R-four. It would be high-density.
Higher density.
Higher density, and it would go from, in one category, from pickup where R-three at thirteen or fourteen, depending, and go up to a max of thirty. And then you're also proposing a senior style, right?
Correct.
And then a specific PUD zone in it, in its, where the PUD is usually has a lot of conditions and controls by the city that could be allowed, uh, to, to have a higher density. Is that correct?
Correct, Mayor. One, one of those we found at one of the select workshops was, we actually do PUDs for single families. We're one of the rare cities that allows that.
Yeah.
So, they said if you got a single-use PUD today, that those should be discouraged, because PUDs were really designed to reach a higher standard. So that's something we do.
Well, we have done PUDs, we have done single-family residential PUDs in our community.
One of the problems, if you look at this map, there's all these overlay PUDs, and if you're a citizen or a developer, it's hard to figure out what's going on. I think if they get designated on the zoning map as a PUD, it serves everyone much better.
Okay. Um, questions of staff? Councilman Lehman?
So is your higher-density residential? Um, let me start over. The original problem that I ran into is that high-density on our comp plan is R-three, eight to twelve, fourteen with a PUD. When the Hy-Vee apartment building was built, or discussed at the workshop, we again unanimously agreed that we were gonna make that a hundred units, R-three. It came forward as a high-density, as a land use, and R-four as the zoning. I made an amendment to that motion, which was accepted by both the motion maker, the seconder, um, and we approved that five-oh. Then it came back later to be rezoned to R-four, even though my understanding of what I voted for as a guiding on the property was high-density, which, to me, is R-three based on our comp plan.
And, and again, Councilmember or Mayor, the issue is, the sand company, which is R-three, using that logic.
Yeah.
Is also regighted wrong. So what we're trying to do here is to say, we need to go back and add a new category. We gotta stop talking about R-three, R-four, or whatever. It would be, high-density would be called up twelve units an acre, up to fourteen with a PUD. Higher-density would be thirty dwelling units an acre or higher, and up to a PUD, up to some number. 'Cause that, we would propose that PUDs be performance-based, not just something you come in for. So, based on this map, those two dark brown spots would be regighted to higher-density. When the sand company was done, it was regighted, just like Hy-Vee, to high-density, and it was your five-zero vote, it was a five-zero vote on the R-four. And that, to your point, raised.
We need a new guiding.
Yes.
Color on the map, if you will.
Thank you.
Right?
So.
Yeah, we need a.
Let, if, if we were to go forward on this, and if the, then, in those circles we'd identified, but then it's not site-specific, it's areas.
And you've increased the densities, which I didn't agree with to begin with, so.
Current, current R-four allows up to forty.
Which I didn't agree with from the very beginning.
We drew maps, uh, circles on maps and said these could be high-density.
Right, and we, I didn't agree on the actual density, which was something we were gonna have to figure out.
The sand company's at twenty-four dwelling units an acre.
Right.
So.
Hy-Vee's at eighteen.
Hy-Vee's only at eighteen point six.
But what he's proposing in this new land use is.
Fourteen to thirty. In my, it, you know, it's the next step.
Plus it's senior.
Fourteen to thirty, and then you could have a senior, and you could have a PUD. Would I ever take this higher-density zoning of fourteen to thirty and then put a PUD? But it's either one of the or now, right? You're saying a PUD is a standalone.
So what we propose is if you're doing a standard, you know, we'll call it higher-density, you'd be at thirty dwelling units an acre. You could allow higher densities for senior housing, so forty to sixty, and you could allow higher densities in general in PUDs, but you'd have to have an actual PUD adopted.
Councilman Lehman? So we're looking at the higher-density, thirty when Adina's seventy-five, you know, uh, other cities are all over the map here. Ninety-eight in Hopkins, uh, thirty-six in Roseville. Uh, I think it's not that big a stretch.
May I tell you, Chaska, Mr. O'Brien, sir, he's doing a thirty-two dwelling unit an acre project in Chaska.
Without any special PUD area.
Marketing.
But I think that it's important, I, you know, I talked to my. But I think that it's important, I, you know, I talk to my peer mayors and they, I say we're struggling with high-density and, "Well, what are you looking at? Are you looking at 50, 60, 70?" "Oh, no, no." "We're looking at 24s and 20s." "Oh, wow, we don't call that high-density in our community," as you can see here. But if we look internally at our community, you know, and look at these high-density other areas, that we already have high-density within our community and don't bat an eye at it.
And from, Mayor and Council, from a land use standpoint, if you look at all these other cities, they look for between 2 and 3% of their gross land area to be in high-density. So that's kind of a benchmark. If you look, some of this is kind of a hodgepodge of medium and higher-density.
Well, it was all grouped together years ago, and they probably used Marshall Avenue as one of the main corridors, still to 101 at that time, before 169. That was the draw then. I think we're absolutely doing the right thing by spreading them out in different locations, different topography, different locations, different areas in the city that will attract different people.
It's different attractions.
I think...
Like roads and things?
I think, I think that those are smart. In a, in a, in the balance of our community, that's how I look at those circles. Counselor Lehman?
So under the higher densities in PUDs, is that a set number like our R3?
Yeah, we haven't, Mayor and Council, we haven't come up with a set number. We would make that a set number. We're just talking to other cities and some of our consultants.
Make it a set number.
We're at a conundrum, and if we're gonna require someone to do something that's part of a here, a PUD that's super special, whatever, what would be a typical bonus? And you can see some of them, it's five to 10 units an acre. We'll come back to you with a specific recommendation there. I think one of the things we learned in the senior housing, I didn't even list all the ones in Apple Valley, but there's 300 construction right now that are 50, 60, 70 dwelling units an acre, because what they try to do is very dense near grocery stores, medical facilities, because they bust their buildings driving those facilities.
Try to cluster.
Have a lot of parking.
Counselor Lehman?
And then when you switch PUD from an overlay zone to an actual zoning district, I'm not familiar with the actual zoning district of a PUD, so I'm gonna have to do some research on that.
We will put together a memo for you.
I'll do more than just a memo. I'm gonna research it, I want...
You send us a memo.
What's that?
You send us a memo.
Yeah, I'll do that. Oh, wait, I can't do that, that'd be a violation.
You send it to him. I think in this big discussion, we talk about, you know, let the market, private market do what they wanna do and let them drive it. In this article that was referenced before from, over the weekend, last week, talking about the spike in rents is due to demand. And here in Shakopee, we are seeing a spike in rents, because demand is high and supply is low, the market-driven. You know, I look at this list here, and some of us have been involved in civic government here for a long time. I think four of these six, Matt, you were involved in, the last one, the Henderson, All Saints. Four or six with some higher densities.
Doesn't mean I voted for all of them. Henderson I specifically didn't vote for.
Yeah, okay. I didn't do homework on that. But I think over the last 25 years, there hasn't been any new higher-density. I think Addison has been identified at 18. Right now, we're looking at, I counted up, five circles, of which two are, you know, in the ground, Hy-Vee and, and the Southbridge one, but we're looking at the old mall, Horton, Canterbury, and downtown. As a community, we should be looking at these housing off, options, watching trends, and I, I don't think as, we should be limiting options. Millennials and older people want to rent by choice. Every article I read, rent by choice. If that's what those folks want to, then that's great. Let the market drive that. Counselor Lehman?
Usually when the market is hot on something, and I'll use the iPhone as an example, people line up all night long waiting to get in there and give their money away. Well, we, we have a lot of the higher-density proposals, or even in some of that we've done, that seem to want tax incentives. Now, how can you have something the market wants so much and then have it subsidized on the same hand? You can't have market-rate housing and then subsidize it. It's subsidized housing at that point.
We did it on the senior project.
Yep.
And we did it, where else did we do it?
Well, from a taxpayer standpoint, don't ask the taxpayers to subsidize something and then turn around and subsidize it again. Okay, I can give you 900 apartments...
But not, look...
Let me finish with this. 900 apartments in Shakopee that are subsidized through tax dollars in the form of vouchers, one way or another, okay? So if you build it and subsidize it to build it, then you turn around and you have people that you're now subsidizing with your tax dollars to live there. You've, in essence, you've subsidized to subsidize. And, and the goal, I understand that some people need assistance. That's not my argument. My argument is, what's the solution? The solution is not to subsidize so that you can subsidize. The solution is to create jobs that people can move up the economic ladder and become self-sufficient. Okay?
Counselor Lehman? Nobody has mentioned subsidized. You know, I, I was shocked and surprised that, you know, we talked about some of our projects with our city-owned property, and people are saying it's gonna be Section 8 apartments. Where did they get that kind of information? Where do these rumors start? And you said subsidized maybe 15 times in that last sentence, and we have not even talked about that.
Well, I mean, if you use the downtown project, Jay, it is subsidized. I don't know where the Section 8 housing thing come from, but it did come from me. But it is...
It's redevelopment, that's not, it's...
It's subsidized.
I think the discussion about, and with all due respect, this is about zoning classifications and that has no discussion about any subsidized. This is just pure land zoning and classifications.
Do we wanna add into these documents that market-rate housing will not be subsidized? Or do we wanna just pass it and then come back later and find out that...
I think this is zoning, it shouldn't have conditions like that.
Mr. Mayor, if we...
Yep. Let, Mr. Mayor, maybe, and I understand the issue, but I caution you about combining subsidy with land use, okay? Because the issue that's before you, and it can be legitimate disagreements on density and PUDs, and there's legitimate reasons to disagree, but this is a land use issue that's before you. And how do you want your city to be developed when it comes to high-density? Where do you want it? How much density do you want it? That's a separate and distinct issue from whether, if somebody comes in with any one of these proposals, whether you do or don't decide to give them incentives to build. And if you give incentives to build, you got other strings you can attach. But try not to mix the two together, because it clouds, it clouds the judgment somewhat on, on the land use issues. That's, that was the only word I cautioned.
I think some of us are trying to do that, so good advice.
Mayor, I thought the whole purpose of getting higher densities was to make it more cost-effective for the developer.
Mayor and Councilmember, I think one of the issues here is two-by-four in Minneapolis costs the same as a two-by-four in Shakopee. Minneapolis rents are $2.60 a square foot. The best rent you get in Shakopee is $1.70. The landowners here, most part, think they're all sitting on gold, and that's why you've not seen a plethora of... I can tell you that Hy-Vee took a huge haircut, because they said, "Look, that high-density housing is important to us for not only employees but customers. We're gonna have to take a haircut on the land." If they had hold out, that land still would be sitting empty, because they had to put a new road in, which was $235,000. And as I said, they paid over a million dollars in fees. When you start adding that onto a unit, you're adding about $100 a month of rent. Our fees, not just ours, but the global fees, are some of the highest in the Twin Cities.
So is Laura.
Pardon me?
So we should lower them?
I think that if you look for an apartment and you pay $12,000 or $13,000 in fees, and even in Minneapolis, where they're getting $2.60 a square foot, for instance, a water connection charge there is $500. And here it's $5,000. That's a huge difference, and it all ends up to the bottom line for development's feasibility. Because they're all borrowing money from the same people, and if you're an investor, you go, "Well, he's getting $2.60 a square foot and his fees are here." You're gonna get $1.70 a square feet and the fees are here.
Well, I think back on the land use aspect, you know, over the last 30 years, or just talk about it at the, about the Canterbury, the major entertainment district, things have changed significantly. And whether you like them or not, or single-family, or apartments, or townhomes, years ago, townhomes were a big rage. You know, apartments are, people want them, and I don't think we should limit our community. I think we should allow options in some designated circles, spread out, that aren't concentrated, like try to learn from our past, if that's what we're saying. I don't think that Marshall Avenue is a concentration problem. I thought, I think specifically, it was a owner problem of not enforcing, and I believe the city council years ago fixed that and did a great job. We already have high-density in our community, so to create another category, not attached to any incentive or what-ifs, just zoning. And, and a PUD, which would allow flexibility, and then a senior proposal. I did note that on a majority of those, higher-density in our community are, are higher-density of seniors, you know, 40, 50 units per acre, so I'd like to see this go to the planning commission and then come back.
I agree.
I agree.
We need a motion or direction?
I think clear direction. I think we heard from Councilmember Lehman, and I think we'll work on the PUD definition.
I think if we don't get some transportation capacity, highway capacity in this city, we're hurting ourselves. I mean, we're building high-density housing when we don't have the capacity currently. We've got a highway...
The transportation?
Our highway is backed up going out and coming back, and we're only gonna make it worse, and...
But you're only looking at this one way. Instead of looking at it as, if we have the high-density, maybe the people won't be on the road, because they'll be able to live here and work here. I think you're only looking at it one way and saying, "Oh, it's gonna add to our highways," but it doesn't have to.
Well, it will.
Well, that's your opinion.
If you build a well-balanced community with jobs, commercial, industrial, a mix of housing in all different categories, you can have a non-commuter community. And I think that 30 years ago, we were. We were classified as a bedroom community during the day they'd all leave. And I actually think it's improved greatly in the last 30 years. I'm still a commuter, unfortunately, but the goal is to be able to live, live, work, and play in the community. That's been one of our slogans forever, hasn't it? And I, I think things like these zoning updates, I call them updates, because things change, I think are important. And what I'm seeing, I think are the right things to do. To bring it up to 2017 and planning our comp plan for 2040, and where will we all be by 2040? We are taking our best shot at what we think, comp plan amendments, zoning, getting in a position to, to look at what that would look like in 2040.
And, and if I can add, Mayor, we are also building on the county's initiative, the 50 by 30. So when you look at our suburban edge and suburban community, we're going to be looked at for more of that, the high-density, because we have the transportation to support it and, and the jobs.
Enough direction from Council to staff? All right, anything else before this? Council, that's the only thing left on our agenda. Our next meeting is September 5th, 2017, and I, Counselor Whiting?
I move to adjourn to September 5th, 2017, 17:00.
And I'll second.
In a second, and I'll remind that we have a busy month in September of meetings on Tuesdays, I think every Tuesday. Also remind everybody that we have an open house here at our new City Hall before our next city council meeting on September 5th. Further discussion, discussion, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed, motion carries, re-stand and adjourn.